May I have your attention, please? The December 18th, 2017 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Bow your heads. Dear God, thank you for this evening, this opportunity to represent the people of Anarundel County, give us wisdom and guidance as we debate these legislation bills and resolutions. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We're mindful that the room is full and there are many matters of public business to attend to this evening. We ask your cooperation to keep this session moving, and we hope to hear from everyone tonight who hopes, who wishes to be heard. Ms. Madam Secretary, would you read the ethics statement, please?
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you.
Mr. Trumpbauer has a presentation.
Mr. Trumpbauer has, I believe, has a citation to present?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With no objection, I'll go off to Diaz and do mine up front, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there's no mic there. Okay. So, if I, is this on? If I could have Doug Myers from Chesapeake Bay Foundation come up. I feel like I need a handheld mic. So, thank you, Doug. Good to see you. So, for those in the audience and my council colleagues, Doug is the Senior Scientist at Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and this year in 2017, Chesapeake Bay Foundation, which is located, their global headquarters is here in Anarundel County, is celebrating their 50th anniversary of being an organization. And so, in honor of that, we've prepared a county council citation, which, it's fairly brief, so I'll go ahead and read it. The county council citation is presented to Chesapeake Bay Foundation on the occasion of its celebration of 50 years of service. We applaud the Chesapeake Bay Foundation for its environmental advocacy in legislative and executive policies, restoration of vast acreages of critical habitat, natural filters and oyster reefs, and for providing award-winning outdoor environmental education to more than 1 million students. With its headquarters in Anarundel County on the shores of the Chesapeake Bay, the foundation has been steadfast in science-driven principles focusing on our 64,000-square-mile national treasure. The county council and all residents of Anarundel County, thank you for your 50 years of commitment to the natural environment in our county and all of the vast Bay watershed. So, thank you, Doug, and thank you for your colleagues. And we'll do a little photo op today. And, Mr. Chair, I have a second secret surprise citation, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Where is my legislative aide, Janice? Where'd you go? Okay. So, this next, the first citation was a celebration. This next one is more bittersweet. Janice Hayes-Williams has been my partner at the county council for seven years, and for those of you that have interacted with Janice, you know often I introduce her as my boss on the county council. But Janice is leaving me to take a very prestigious position at the City of Annapolis government, which I tried to convince her was a demotion because there's less constituents, but she didn't buy it. So, all of us, in appreciation of your seven years of service, we got you your very own citation, Janice. And it reads, "In recognition of your seven years of service to the Anarundel County Council and your dedication to the constituents of District 6 and beyond, we applaud your dedication, your deep knowledge of history, and your ability to keep Councilmember Chris Trumpbauer in line. The council extends our best wishes as you depart to serve the city of Annapolis. Congratulations on your new position.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, of course.
I just want to say, this has been a, you can hear me, right? I'm a teacher. This has been a wonderful seven years. It's been seven years in the Garden of Good and Evil. I love you all. Thank you very much for putting up with me.
Amen.
I look forward to coming back to a council meeting, just so I can sit down and participate. I will see you soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you, Mr. Trumpbauer. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. The remarks will be limited to two minutes, please. So, I'm going to call the first six, if your first six folks will come up and take these seats. I think there's six seats here. C.J. Mueschaw, Rob Smith, Rebecca Forte, Sharon New, Lee, excuse me, Leah Frazier, and Elizabeth Solomon. We'll take them in the order that I have them here, if that's all right. C.J. Mueschaw?
Thank you.
There you go. Two minutes, please.
Over the past year, a woke community has testified over and over to the peril represented on the Anarundel County Council. Two weeks ago, Councilmember Michael Peruca was voted into the position of Anarundel County Council Chair under the guise of a party-line vote. I am a registered independent, and neither the DNC nor the RNC represent me. I'm here to remind our elected council members that now is not the time for business as usual. The greater good can only come with individual sacrifice, and to the vacillating politician who has failed their constituency, we implore you to invoke courage over comfort. To the moderate community member who prefers order over justice, your silence is complicity. We are gathered here today out of love for our community and not out of hate for that which we disagree with. We are here to demand that the people means, we the people means, we the people. The eyes of our children are no place for paper napkin white knights, and neither is this council. We all deserve better, including the knights. We all deserve the dawn of a new day where individual courage pushes each of us into our individual truths and sacrifice for the greater good. It is time for the past to step down and resolve itself to the past. A time for self-reflection is now, for respectful love and community. Tonight, the community with our hearts full of love asks the Honorable Anarundel County Council Chair, Michael Peruca, though you may be full of hate in your heart, out of love, we ask you to step down. Thank you for letting go and allowing what may come to be.
Thank you very much. Rest of Rob Smith.
Robert Smith, 1487 Chatham Court, Crofton, Maryland. I'm here also tonight to speak about the recent appointment of Councilman Peruca as the Chair of the council. I do understand that, as was mentioned before, that, you know, as somebody who's followed the council for many years, that it's normal councilman courtesy, but it's not a rule. And then, when you have traditions and when you have, how do I say, and somebody that over the year, well, not somebody, but an individual over the years whose associations, shall we say, have had a lot of controversy and have a lot of actions that we have to kind of sometimes need to think about breaking tradition and doing what's right, not just necessarily for, it's like for the vision of Anarundel County, being that, one, this Anarundel County, I mean, we need to project something that's inclusive, and then those ideas that have been associated with a particular, that have been associated with this individual over time, doesn't make that inclusive, especially if we're supposed to be coming before you as citizens and feeling like we're a part of this community and be able to speak. So, for that reason, I'd like for you all to look at basically revoking that decision as members of the council and possibly doing that just for the integrity of what Anarundel County projects to the rest of the state and to the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. As I introduce the next, I forgot to ask you to say your name and address before you begin, so I'm going to ask you. I'm also going to ask you not to refrain from the clapping, please, because it's going to just take up some time. I want everybody to be heard. Thank you. Rebecca Forte, please, name and address in two minutes.
I prefer sign language clapping, anyway. So, my name's Rebecca Forte. I am submitting some documents into the record for the night, and I made a copy for each of you guys, because I am speaking to each of you. My address is 752 Dividing Road, Saffron Park, Maryland, 21146. I call on all members of the Anarundel County Council to vote for a new council chair and for Councilman Michael Peruca to resign. Councilman Peruca supports fired Judge and accused pedophile Roy Moore. Councilman Peruca was not only a member of the League of the South, but sat on its board. Councilman Peruca worships in the church of another member of the League of the South. Councilman Peruca married a woman who is also a member of the League of the South. Councilman Peruca doesn't believe in the rule of law and lawmaking bodies unless they conform to his brand of Christianity. Councilman Peruca doesn't believe in public schools and multiple times hasn't attended the budget meetings to support them, which you all know because you did attend. Most recently, he voted against the budget to support them. Councilman Peruca believes that there is no such thing as a hate crime. Councilman Peruca often doesn't speak for himself, instead nodding to the Institute of the Constitution students who then raise his points for him. At least one of these students is also in the League of the South. Councilman Peruca supported Kim Davis in undermining the Supreme Court's interpretation of the law, and not only that, he did so in an official capacity, referring to himself as an Annapolis lawmaker, as if his actions should be reflected on us. Councilman Peruca was once good friends with Michael Hill and yet claims not to have heard what he believes about things like interfaith marriage and...
Do we have time? I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Sharon New. Sharon New, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the bell that time. Excuse me. Sharon New, name and address in two minutes, please.
Sharon New, 295 Newton, Fayette Place, Oaterton, Maryland. There we go. As a county employee, I'm embarrassed and ashamed that leadership of Anarundel County, namely County Councilmember Michael Peruca, has decided to align themselves with misogyny, homophobia, and racism. How did a pipeline of hate from Alabama to Annapolis happen? Further, I know this county works diligently and has put great effort and monies into promoting a diverse environment in its workforce and to recruiting minorities for the police, fire, and other agencies. How do you think the fact that Anarundel County has its very own local Roy Moore will help this effort? For the sake of the county, for the sake of our reputation as a community of diverse and welcoming communities, please immediately resign, Mr. Peruca, your position as county council member and chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. New. Leah Frazier, please, name and address in two minutes.
Leah Frazier, 1689 Justin Drive, Gambrels. I'm here tonight to express my disgust at the fact that we have a county council chairman who is a member of a hate group, and as a person of color who lives in this community, it is especially painful for me that a person with such authority in our county that has influence over our lives is someone who is a member of an organization that laments the hordes of non-white immigrants to the United States. I am a member of that horde of non-white immigrants, and I resent the fact that you were a member of that organization. And also, Councilman Walker, I am disappointed in you. I really expected better, and I thought that perhaps you could find it in yourself to abandon partisanship and to really think about your vote for who is going to lead our council. I ask you, and I ask the rest of all, to reconsider the vote and to make the county a welcoming place for all people, because right now, as a person of color and an immigrant in this community, it is not a welcoming place.
Thank you very much, Ms. Solomon. Elizabeth Solomon, name and address, two minutes, please. Thank you.
Elizabeth Solomon, 1833 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. I'm a resident of Anarundel County and District 5, and I'm here because I'm disturbed about our leadership and the message that it gives for the rest of the county and the rest of the country. When I think about what I want in my elected officials, what traits, what characteristics I think are important, they are integrity, honesty, and most importantly, the ability to bring people together, to improve our community, to honor our diversity. So, that's why I'm so distressed that Councilman Peruca, that you divide instead of uniting our community. You support a white supremacist group. What messages does that give to our community? And now, you support a man accused by women of being a pedophile and a sexual harassment. Why? Do you not believe the women? Do you not believe them? As a District 5 resident, I find that you cannot represent me and you cannot represent my community. Please, I respectfully ask you to step down.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the next six, please, and please come down and take these chairs. Alice Kane, Randy Williams, Laura Kelman, excuse me, Kelman, David Whitney, Adrian Fair, Thank you. We'll begin with Alice Kane.
Hi, Alice Kane.
Thank you.
426 Ferry Point Road, in Chris Trumpbauer's district.
Thank you.
My name is Alice Kane, and I'm here tonight because hate has no place in Anarundel County. I'm here as a mom, a person of faith, and a commissioner on the Annapolis Education Commission to express my grave concern on the collective impact of politicians like Donald Trump and Roy Moore on our community, including our schools. It made my heart hurt to learn of the association between our county's new leader and Mr. Moore in particular and the blatantly racist group, the League of the South. As you'll hear later tonight, our county's schools are under-resourced and suffering from overcrowding and all the challenges that that brings. I have a son who has 37 kids in his algebra class, and, but I'll save that for another night, because the worst thing that I'm seeing in our schools right now is an uptick of bullying, fighting, and intolerance among the kids. It took a significant turn for the worst after the presidential election, and it continues to get worse. Our kids are watching, they're paying attention, and as every parent in this room knows, they don't do what adults say, they do what adults do. Anarundel County needs and deserves a leadership that is inclusive, that cares about the greater good, and recognizes public education is the best investment we can make in our community's future. Our community deserves better.
Thank you, Alice Kane. Randy Williams?
Yeah, hi. Randy Williams from Shadyside, Maryland, and P.O. Box 479, Shadyside, Maryland. I represent a large coalition of families from Mr. Walker's District 7, who believe that a cell tower at Shadyside Elementary School is a very, very dangerous and bad idea. We also believe that cell towers in Anarundel County are a very, very bad idea. I will not get into the medical issues, I could spend hours on that, but I am a nurse, and I will tell you that there are evidence-based, science-based studies that show that children who are vulnerable, pregnant women who are vulnerable, and adults who have special needs are very vulnerable to the dangers of the electromagnetic frequency radiation. So, I would like you to take a look at PG County's stand on cell towers, because they've decided not to put them at schools anymore, and Montgomery County is no longer placing them at elementary schools. So, let's go ahead and take a look at our neighbors and see that they're making really good choices, because this is the year of the child, and we need to make sure that the children are healthy, because when it comes down to it, we're going to worry about who is running our country and who's running our county, and if they care about our children, we know they're going to care about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Laura Kelman?
Thank you very much. My name is Laura Kelman. I live in Cape St. Clair, Annapolis. I believe, as many in the audience, that Michael Peruca, as our council chair and as my representative in Cape St. Clair, is extremely unfortunate. I invite those in the audience who believe as I do to stand while I speak, and then please sit when I am done. Thank you. Michael Peruca is a very prolific writer on an organization called the Institute on the Constitution. He has written, in 2014, I don't know if you realize, but "free public education," again, we have a long habit of not realizing it's wrong. "Free public education is the 10th plank in the Communist Manifesto. We've accepted a system that is socialist in its nature." Councilman, end quote. Councilman Peruca is not a fan of our public school system, in fact, just the opposite. And why he has a position in our county council, I have no idea. I also want to say that Councilman Peruca does not believe in freedom of religion if we are not his brand of Christianity. Councilman Peruca was very good friends with Michael Hill, yet has no clue what he believes about things like interfaith marriage. This, I don't believe. In 2012, I think I'll skip that, regarding Councilman Peruca as our council chair, councilmanic courtesy is both arbitrary and an irresponsible way of conducting itself as a representative body. A tradition is not a rule. There are situations where there should be more deliberation on the merits of it being forsaken.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelman. I'm sorry, I have to be consistent, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you all for standing. David Whitney?
David Whitney, from Round Top Drive, Annapolis, and it's interesting to me that those who are calling for the action tonight don't seem to respect the rule of law. We have a process of elections. Those elections were held. The people of each of the seven districts here chose each of you to represent them on this council, and so we have people tonight here who want to overturn that election somehow. They also chose you to represent them in the choice of those who are chairman of this chamber, and you made that decision last time, properly so, lawfully so, and so we have a call again to overturn the rule of law. It's interesting to me that what we have heard tonight, many allegations that have no proof, no evidence whatsoever, whether the standard happened, innocent, whatever happened to the standard, innocent until proven guilty. It appears the people don't follow the standard.
Let me interrupt you, Pastor, just for one second. Only one person has the authority to speak at a time, and that's the person that's recognized by the chair. And if you call out or do that again, this is a warning, that violates our rules and violates our decorum, okay? So, please don't, please don't do that. Please continue.
Thank you. It appears the people who don't like the standard, which means that they would just take and destroy someone's life, would be to make an allegation which has no factual basis, and that kind of reminds me of the French Revolution, you know? So, in the morning, somebody accuses you of something that you haven't done, and in the afternoon, your head is separated from your body with a guillotine. We reject mobocracy. Our founders rejected mobocracy. Mobocracy is not the rule of law. When we disagree with someone on a point regarding philosophy of civil government, we cannot demand that everyone must adhere to our position. That's not how it works in a constitutional republic. So, it appears to me that the mantra of tolerance is actually a mask for gross intolerance. When you don't like the outcome of an election, you can make the choice of some who supported HRC screaming at the sky, as some of them have done, but it's wrong for those to upset, upset by the elections and the outcome of those elections to seek to disrupt the work of the civil government. This legislative body meets to make decisions. You have been elected, and we thank you for your service as our representatives.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Adrian Fair?
Good evening.
There you go. Go ahead.
I'm here to show my support for Michael Peruca, and I also want to say something about Roy Moore. I met Judge Moore in 2003, one of the most beautiful speeches on scripture, the Declaration of Independence, and the Constitution of the United States that I've ever heard in my life. And from that point forward, I've always been a fan of Judge Moore. I've followed his career very closely. I've read everything he's written. I've tracked the accusations against him. They are purely political. And just to make sure, my answer to the question of, "Do I believe those women?" The answer is an affirmative, no. I think those women, they are liars. They are paid prostitutes. They are skanks. That's what they are, and that's how I feel about them and those of you who come in here and make these false charges.
Thank you, Mr. Fair.
Oh, 4709 Sarah Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland. Look me up.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. Again, I'm going to, again, I'm going to remind you, again, I'm going to remind you that one person has the authority to speak, and that's the person recognized by the chair. So, those people who have called out are out of order. People, we will respect the person who is speaking and we'll let them speak. Mr. Delamater, name and address in two minutes, please.
Joseph Delamater, Glambarney, Maryland, 21060. Read here from Second Chronicles 714. "If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves, pray, and seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, forgive their sin, and heal their land." I think we should be saying that every morning in schools in this county, and we may not have this problem of hatred and bullying going on. I just would like to say, you know, that if we would return back to God, we would hear, he would hear our land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delamater. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the next, there's three more names here.
There's five, Michael.
I'm sorry, there's...
There's actually another sheet behind that sheet. So, there's five.
Okay. Let me call five names. Carol Schilling, Sue Ann West, Yasmin Jamison, Brooks Shandelmeyer, and Dick Hahn. We'll begin, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll begin with Carol Schilling.
Hi, I'm Carol Schilling, 7 Leeward Court, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Annapolis and have significance and concerns regarding the appointment of Mr. Peruca to chair this council due to his nonsecular views on management and his ties to white supremacy, KKK-type groups such as the League of the South, and to other political candidates such as Mr. Moore, who have expressed desires to repeal all the amendments to the U.S. Constitution, passed Amendment 10, amendments which protect the rights of persons of color, women, and LGBTQ citizens. I was born in Austin, Texas, and have lived in Texas, Oklahoma, Maryland, California, and Washington states. I lived in Bowie, Maryland as a child during busing and was bused from Bowie to Seaburke for grades four through six. All was fine. Friends of mine grew up in Severn and had a much different experience. As an adult, I lived and taught in Montgomery County and have experienced true Maryland diversity, where all are truly equally treated. I understand that there is a chapter of the KKK in Annapolis, and as a child of the South, I am appalled. I have concerns that council members are members of the KKK and/or have association with members of the KKK, a hate group which has maimed, murdered, and harassed citizens across this country. I would like to see equality here in Anarundel County and diversity. I would like to see policies put forth that move us forward towards that goal. I do not believe that Mr. Peruca's leadership will lead us in that, to successful diversity with prosperity for all citizens, and I ask the council to select a new chairperson for the council, and I will vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schilling. Ms. Sue Ann West?
Sue West, Pinewood, Annapolis. Thank you for your time. Well, based on tonight's comments, I feel it's only fair to call on and demand Ms. Davenport to resign as chairman and member of the Anarundel County Democrat Central Committee. Ms. Davenport has supported Hillary Clinton, a known drunkard, a liar, and an enabler of men that take advantage... men that take advantage...[598.16][598.16](APPLAUSE).
We will, we will listen to everybody's testimony as we've, as we've done so far, so please listen.
And, thank you. An enabler of men that take advantage of women. She's well-known to the FBI for endangering the security of classified information and conspired with Russians and Arab countries to sell the Secretary of State office. Not only that, she stole the Democrat Party nomination from Bernie Sanders. Ms. Davenport should resign for her prior support of Bill Clinton, a known sexual offender, accused rapist, and an admitted and convicted liar. Ms. Davenport should resign for her prior support of Barack Obama, whose policies on the Mideast caused Muslim civilian deaths in Syria, Iraq, and Afghanistan beyond number. That man gave the bomb to Iran and North Korea. He funded Hamas. He funded our terrorist enemies through Iran. His use of FISA 720 authority to spy on a presidential candidate is disgusting. He knowingly tolerated Hillary's damage and shameful irresponsibility to top-secret, sensitive information security. There's no doubt the Democrat Party has fallen on hard times, but Ms. Davenport's leadership is counterproductive to a democratic and liberty-seeking society. So if there's anyone who should resign in the interest of Anarundel County, it should be her, not Mr. Peruca. We are blessed to have him serving our county. Thank you.[700.36][700.36](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Ms. West. Yasmin Jamison, name and address, two minutes, please.
Yasmin Jamison, Arnold, Maryland.
Mike?
I would like to invite David Whitney to read the Anarundelpatriot.com for facts and pictures. If you need that, I'll get it to you. So I have a handout. I'm not going to be able to get through this because, again, I just saw this right before I came in, in the Patriot. Anarundel County Council Chairman Michael Peruca has violated the annotated Code of Maryland Attorney's Rules of Professional Conduct. On federal and state documents, Peruca claims he is an attorney practicing law for Peruca and Peruca. However, this is a law firm that no longer exists and ceased to legally exist on July 23rd, 2014, approximately three and a half years ago. He claimed, his claim of working for a nonexistent corporation violates the annotated Code of Maryland Rule 19-307.5, firm names and letterheads. Peruca's violation of the above clause is shown by the November 15, 2017 Judge Roy Moore for U.S. Senate campaign report to the U.S. Federal Elections Commission, FEC. The report lists Michael A. Peruca donating $2,000. The details of that political campaign contribution reveal Peruca reported his occupation as attorney and his employer as Peruca &amp; Peruca, located at 8028 Ritchie Highway, Suite 300, Pasadena, Maryland 21122. This firm does not exist, and Peruca retired and closed the business on August 1st, 2014. Earlier this year, on June 9th, 2017, FEC filing regarding another donation to Judge Roy Moore for U.S. Senate for $2,500, Peruca claimed he was self-employed and listed his home address. Peruca also states in the 2017 Maryland State Bar Association...
Thank you very much, Ms. Jamison.
I just want to know why the guy from Baltimore gets to come and...
Your time is up. Thank you.
...in Anarundel County.
Ma'am, your time is up.
And as your constituent, I'd like to...
Ma'am, your time is up. Please.[849.13][849.13](APPLAUSE). Brooks Shandelmeyer?
Thank you, members of the council. For the record, my name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live in 66 Regatta Bay Court in Annapolis, Maryland. I've testified here quite a few times. I've prided myself on always being a little more diplomatic about things, but you being a chairman is a bridge too far, and all of you guys know his associations. Please do the right thing, put a new chairman on there. Your association with a pedophile getting up on stage on national television supporting a pedophile is a bridge too far for everyone in Anarundel County. Now, the rule of law was mentioned here, and I do find it ironic that that is brought up when someone, the new chairman's campaign manager, was found guilty of violating election law and sentenced to serve time in prison. And with that, I will, the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. (APPLAUSE). Mr. Han, please, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Han, please.
Thank you. My name is Dick Lawn. I live in Crofton, Maryland. I moved to Crofton close to 50 years ago on purpose because I really liked this county, and I've loved living here, and I love the county. Very unhappy with the political leadership that I see in the county council and elsewhere in the county. And I think it speaks to accepting racism as an okay thing, and that holding a hidden agenda which divides people and divides the public is a way to govern. And I just, I just don't understand it. I, I think our, our county is, is moving in the wrong direction. I just don't see it. I think we need a government that brings people together and moves us all forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawn.[1046.83][1046.83](APPLAUSE). And the chair, the chair wants to appreciate those who stood in support rather than testify because we do have such a long evening. So thank you very much. Is there any, is there any item that...
We are finished.
No, we're at the end of the list. Is there any, is there any item that any council member would like to place on the agenda?
We're here to speak. We're here to speak. Yeah.
We are at the end of the sign up.
No, there's not a sign up. That's not how it works.
You've always allowed the people to speak afterwards, always. They always let that guy go at the podium, always. And John Grasso can testify at that, every time he goes to the podium.
We are, we are at the end of, we are at the end of the public invitation to public. I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask the people who have come up to the front to...
Because we can't speak as long as amendment...
I am indicating to you that we are complete, we have completed the sign up for the invitation to the audience.
(INAUDIBLE) by people at the end.
That is practice.
(INAUDIBLE).
That is a practice, Mr. Chairman.
Are you going to let us speak?
Is there a...
Just a moment.
Mr. Recession, unless someone appeals your disbarment.
It will be a loss.
Mr., oh, just, Mr. Walker, would you...
I was just going to say I think people should be allowed to speak.
All right. Mr. Walker, I will take that advice. We will, if any, if we have anybody else who wants to speak, come and take the chairs right now, and this is the last call.[1158.58][1158.58](APPLAUSE). We'll take, we'll take, we'll take, we have six people now, and this is the last call, okay?
Mr. Grant, you have to... You have to be down by the microphone, we can hear you.
Okay, that's fine. We'll go from the right to the left. Sir, you are, you're recognized for two minutes. Go ahead.
Testing, testing. Please. Okay, I have a quick couple of questions. First off, I'd like to know why those seats are reserved for Mr. Peruca's friends, and a man from Baltimore can sit there, but residents who live in Anarundel County have to sit in the back. So, but I don't accept, I'll get an answer for that, but it's just curiosity. Secondly, I've, I've heard your pastor speak at the diocese, but nobody else has ever been offered to speak at the diocese in the past. John Grasso welcomed Pastor Williams or, in any case, I'm just going to get on. I'd like to ask two questions, which, which are, basically, the first question is, is Michael Peruca a racist? And now, if you're not aware by now, Michael Peruca is the man sitting right here in front of you, usually with a smile on his face, and he happens to be now the man in charge, and he's the chair of this meeting. But is he a racist? Well, he was the director of a group called the League of the South, and you might know the group. It's been labeled a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. It's the same group that helped organize the march that brought racism, anti-Semitism, and death to Charlottesville. Mr. Peruca will tell you, he didn't know that the League of the South was a racist organization when he was a member, but while he was a member, the League of the South's president explicitly stated in 2004, "We stand for the survival, well-being, and independence of the Southern people." And by "Southern people," we mean white Southerners. More recently, the League of the South celebrated the assassination of Abraham Lincoln, stating, "Join us to celebrate the great accomplishment of John Wilkes Booth. He knew a man who needed killing when he saw him." Later, that same president of the League of the South wrote, "If white Christian European Americans should lose control over the North American continent to non-white minorities, then it will cease to be the civilized place we have known for the past several hundred years." So do you believe Michael Peruca somehow missed the fact that his group could have been anything but a hate group? Do you think Jerry Walker, right here, and John Grasso, sitting right there, and Derek Fink, could they somehow have missed that fact? It's hard to believe, but they actually voted for him to become a councilman.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[1317.41][1317.41](APPLAUSE). Ma'am, you are recognized for two minutes, please. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Singleton Blakely. I live at 710 Americana Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. What I wanted, I came up here, I wanted to ask the same question that this gentleman did, why this man was here testifying from Baltimore. Don't they have enough problems in Baltimore? Can someone answer why he's here and allowed to testify?
Ma'am, we're not going to answer your questions, but you may, you may pose that...
Well, he's in a reserved seat, which means that he was invited, you knew he was coming. Nobody could sit in those seats. So I'm just curious, you know, is he a troll? Is he here to represent you? He doesn't represent any black person in this room. And I'd also like to ask if the people that's here with us tonight could stand so that you could see how many people are supporting... I just wanted to make that observation.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
And I yield to his...
Thank you. Thank you. Ma'am, you're recognized for two minutes.[1392.03][1392.03](APPLAUSE). Go ahead.
My name is Vicki Bruce, and I'm from Reva, Maryland. I really never thought I'd see the day that I could come to a county council meeting and hear the good friend of the chair call me and my 13-year-old daughter a skank and a prostitute, and call Ruby Singleton Blakely a skank and a prostitute, and Yasmin Jamison, and all my good friends that are here trying to make this a better county. That is phenomenal. So you've really hit the ground running. I'm reading a letter, a very important letter, that was published today in the Anarundel Patriot, and it was published because it was given to you yesterday as long as Steve Schu, county executive. It's a retired Army officer's letter to county executive Steve Schu and council chair Michael Peruca. "I'd like to take this opportunity," it says, "a very dear friend of mine," he says. "I'd like to take this opportunity to explain why I am, after 39 years, switching my political affiliation to the Democratic Party. As a citizen of Anarundel County for over 16 years and a retired U.S. Army officer, I was appalled to learn that both you and Mr. Peruca supported Roy Moore during the Alabama Senate campaign to include posing for photographs with Moore at a Michael Peruca-sponsored fundraiser in Severna Park. Despite the fact that Roy Moore's infatuation with children recently came to the forefront, you had to know that he was twice removed as chief justice of the Supreme Court of Alabama due to his total disregard for the law, along with his proclamation that Muslims shouldn't serve in Congress. You choose, you still chose to support Moore. I think many Anarundel County citizens would be very interested in hearing your explanation of this matter." I'm skipping forward. "As a military officer, I swore to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, sir. And please remain focused on the word domestic. Make no mistake that any support of a known racist and pedophile is counter to the oath of a commissioned officer I took over 35 years ago. While I no longer wear the uniform of the U.S. Army officer, I will continue..."
Thank you, ma'am.
"...to defend the Constitution of the United States this time. Have you noticed, the proud Democrat, I implore you and Michael Peruca to resign immediately."
Ma'am, you are, Mr. Lancaster, you are recognized.
I owe my time of honor, not to two men of dishonor.[1538.66][1538.66](APPLAUSE).
My name is Spear Lancaster. I live in 1188 Bacon Ridge Road. I'm not here to talk about Mr. Peruca. I'm here to talk about the most visceral hate I've ever seen in a public meeting, and I've been to thousands of them, and they're accusing you of being a hater. I'm also realizing that these people have no respect for the law. They do not understand that it was an election, you are legally elected, you've been elected by your fellow members. I ran for office. I know what it takes to get out and beat the bush and to walk door to door. I know what it is to race in the primary. I respect every one of you guys here. You're the backbone of this country. But these people show nothing but moral arrogance. They reek of arrogance and righteousness. They think they're on the side of the better angels, and you guys are evil incarnate. It's something else. I'm very disturbed, and I'm very unhappy with seeing this type of behavior in a county that is known for having good schools and well-educated people and high incomes, and they've got all kinds of accolades, but it's very disturbing to see this tonight. I've never seen this in a meeting before. I've been to many state events, I've been to civic events, I've been to all over the place. I've run for office, and I've been castigated vehemently in Democratic clubs that I went to one time. I was the state coordinator for the fair tax. I had people almost willing to take me out and clean the ground up with me, and I used to say, "Well, what, I'm just telling you about what I think is a good, good procedure," you know? So I, I respect all you guys. I know you work hard, and I think these people here should respect the fact that you guys could have a right to elect who you want to write, and they don't have to come in and just wipe it out. This is mob rule. This is mob bureaucracy.
Thank you, Mr. Lancaster.
Scary.
Thank you. Ma'am, you're recognized, two minutes. Name and address, please.
My name is Jessica Gorsky, and I'm from Severna Park, Maryland.
Please, 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 excuse me, Ms. Gorsky, you'll be able to begin again. Please, please stop the side, please stop the side conversation. We're almost there. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Begin again, please.
I request the immediate review of Councilman Peruca for violations pertaining to the conflict of interest, improper influence, and public disclosure violations by the county Ethics Commission. Councilman Peruca has repeatedly used the prestige of office for his private gain and for validation of his extreme political beliefs. It is due to these continued ethics violations that I request the county council to declare Councilman Peruca to be disqualified to serve as chairman of the county council. In addition, I ask for the county council to immediately declare District 5 County's council seat vacant due to the Anarundel County Code, the 2005 Anarundel County Charter, Article 2, County Council, Section 209, Removal from Office, Part 3, fails to perform or is incapable of performing the duties of his office for 180 consecutive days. Since Councilman Peruca began his term as District County Council delegate, he has been incapable of performing the duties of his office for more than 180 consecutive days as stated in the county charter to declare a seat vacant. Councilman Peruca is incapable of performing these because he does not believe the county council acts in accordance with what he believes are their founders' belief that the purpose of government is to protect and defend rights and liberties that are granted to men by God and are part of his created order, as noted in his open letter in April of 2017 of the Severna Park Voice. He also believes that only Christians can serve in government positions for laws to be legal. His beliefs do not allow him to serve his position properly, as he often abstains from voting because he feels many ordinances are not in accordance with his biblical interpretation of what the law is. Peruca stated to BIS Monthly that the county council does not have the authority, based on his beliefs, to do three-quarters of what they do within the county budget, and that is why he votes against it. Councilman Peruca continues fraudulent and immoral activities. Robocalls that were used during Peruca's campaign were also used in the final days before December 12th election in Alabama in support of Roy Moore.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
And I have the articles that support that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. We are... Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Brent, 607 Haven Hill in Edgewater, Maryland. I'm here to talk about two issues tonight. One is the school APFOs, which, as the neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula, we fully support this. Thank you, Mr. Grasso, for bringing it forward again. For those of us on the peninsulas in the county, school growth, excuse me, I should say developmental growth, is, is a big negative impact on our quality of life on the peninsulas. So, a bill like this is really going to help us improve our quality of life. Also, the zoning resolution, we'd like to actually see that enforced, put forward and voted on as well, and we fully support that as well. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Phil Hager as the new planning and zoning director. He has helped us tremendously over the last two to three months, really get a better grasp of what is going on in the, in the county in the way of just the overall plans and what's going forward, and we're... We just want to make, we want to make sure that when it comes to the GDP, the GDP, we don't, we have a little bit of an issue with it just being a piece of guidance. We want to see it have a little bit more teeth. If we can work on some kind of legislation that would give it more teeth to be held more firmly to, we would like to actually see that, and not just a guidance piece. Again, that's legislation that you all have control of, and we look forward to working with you all over that over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We will, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, you're dismissed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Nothing on it. I just got a comment. The last 20, 30 minutes has certainly shocked me, quite frankly, but I do want to clarify, at least from this body, at least from this office or this district, that no woman who's been a victim of sexual assault or abuse in this county, what I do not consider them a skank, and I do not consider them a prostitute, and I want to make that clear, that this body does not believe in that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Smith, and I certainly would agree with that, and I do not, I would, I would, I would make this one comment, please, make, make one statement, and that is, I do not, and I have not, and I would not, and I will not, support anyone who practices or excuses pedophilia or any other sexual misconduct. So, I'd just make, like to make that for the record, okay? Does any, we'll, we'll move along. Is there, is there any councilman who would like to place an item on the agenda? Hearing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of the, of the bill resolution of minutes constitutes reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 4th, 2017.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman John Grasso at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr., Mr. Trumbauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry.
Move to accept the minutes as read, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries minutes of December 4th, 2017, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill, excuse me, Bill 117, An Ordinance Concerning Shoreham Beach Special Community Benefit District. Bill Number 10117, An Ordinance Concerning Commercial Recreational Facilities.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 5717, Resolution Approving the Reappointments of Members to the Severn River Commission.
Due to outside counsel here this evening, may I have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill 9517 out of order?
Second.
Thank, thank, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hear and vote on Bill Number 9517 out of order is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9517.
Bill Number 9517, An Ordinance Concerning Anarundel County Employee Retirement Savings Plan.
Mr., Ms. Schultz.
Here with me at the table is Andy Rhodes from our personnel office, John Hammond from our budget office, Nancy Duden and Kelly Lovett from the law office, and our outside tax counsel, Barry Downey, and for the record, I'm Kaylee Schultz from the county executive's office. Bill 9517 establishes an employee retirement savings plan as an optional retirement benefit choice for those county employees eligible to participate in the county's existing employees' retirement plan. The retirement savings plan is a defined contribution retirement plan as a 401A plan, which provides for an employee contribution of 4% of salary and an employer contribution of 8% salary. The purpose of this option is to have a competitive retirement benefit option to offer during the recruitment process that is, that is very attractive to those who may not have interest or the ability to stay in the county government for a period of time that would make them become vested in the current pension system.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Yes, thank you. On December 16th at 9:00 AM, I sent Bernie Marzick and Ms. Rhodes seven questions. I did not get responses. I was hoping to address those now. I don't know if we want to go through one by one, but there was a list of, of questions that I had related to this bill. Is that okay, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number one, do we have an estimate of the percentage of existing employees who are currently in our defined plan who would transfer to the optional plan?
No.
That was an easy one. Do we have an estimate of what percentage of new and existing employees participate in the optional plan before it would affect the financial stability of the existing plan? So, to get to the heart of that, my concern is that we have a 30-day rule that we're putting into effect, and the other pension is six months. So, what, why, why aren't they consistent?
Let me have Ms. Rhodes expound upon the answer to the first question, and I think she'll handle the second question.
Okay.
Councilman Pruski, for new employees coming in, we're giving them 30 days to make an election as to whether or not they want to go into the defined contribution or the defined benefit plan. And the reason for the 30 days is, we're going to make sure that prior to coming onboard, they're given lots of informational materials, and they'll be training not only as a new employee through the orientation program, but separate with the pension system. If we give them beyond 30 days, they have to go back and make up those missed contributions. So, we didn't want an employee having a hardship by having to make up contributions, so we felt that 30 days would give them two periods of time that they would have to make up going forward. The six-month time is, we have approximately 544 employees that possibly could elect to go into this system. 544. Of the 544, there are approximately 39 to 40 that have transferred time in from other municipalities, which may make them already vested, so they would not be eligible. So, we have to go through it one by one. The reason for the six months is, those employees will need to have time to meet with our two pension analysts, to look at their benefits as they exist today, and to look at what the new plan would offer them as a possible benefit. We also want to give them time to meet with their financial advisors, so that they're not making a decision to switch quickly or without having all the education that we can give them. So, that was the reason for the difference.
Okay. I'll comment later about how I feel about that, but at least one, thank you for answering my question. What are the administrative fees for the optional plan as opposed to the pension plan?
$10,000 a year, and then $75 per member, per year, would also be charged as an administrative fee.
Thank you. Under what conditions would the county consider amending the new option plan by lowering the existing, existing employee contribution rate versus the, the contribution rate, or both? So, it's basically what I'm trying to say is, would there be, be any amendments to the current pension plan based upon this plan?
I'm going to let Mr. Hammond, Chairman of the Board of Trustees, answer that question. Mr. Pruski.
So, the thrust of your question, would there be any change in the retirement, the employees' retirement plan as a result of the savings plan? None is, none is contemplated.
Okay. Will adding the optional plan increase or decrease the turnover rate for employees covered by the plan? Was there any analysis done by that?
We do not know what the turnover would, if there'd be any effect to the turnover. We do believe this will be a good recruitment tool for people that are not looking to spend 20, 30 years with the county, but want to come in and then transfer time, you know, at a later time.
And last but not least, since this is a new plan, what are the, what are the county's plans to educate employees, new and existing employees in regards to the new plan choice?
Well, I think I kind of covered that, that there'll be information going out ahead of time for new employees. We'll also do training as part of the new employee orientation, and there'll be a separate training session that will just go over the differences between the defined benefit and the defined contribution plan. Same thing with the, the current employees, we want to give them ample time to meet with the pension analyst and to talk to financial advisors.
Thank you. Just to give a quick comment to my fellow council members, I have concerns about this plan. I certainly think looking down the road for an option, but my worry is this, and I hope it's not a veiled cover, to move people off of our pension plan into a private plan. You know, the federal government tried to do that with Social Security and other things, and I certainly think that the pay that we pay our employees and the pension is a benefit, and I'm just concerned. I certainly am open to the option, totally respect that, but I have a big issue with the 30 days. I, I think that, that's, that's my hangup, and I didn't put an amendment in, but I think that's something we need to look at very closely, because the same argument could be if somebody's looking at the defined benefit versus the, you know, the, the private option, you want to give them time. Now, maybe it's not six months, maybe it's a little bit lower, but I just, I have a big concern when you're telling somebody 30 days, you got to make that choice. I just don't think it's enough time. Again, my personal opinion, but based upon, you know, somebody coming in and not understanding the options. And I want to be clear, there is no plan for this administration to require or the removal of the pension plan, and this will always be an option. I want to get that on the record right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman, this is, this is a optional program, and there's, you know, it's 100% employee choice, so...
Understood.
That's, and right now, right now, the employees coming in have an option. They can join Tier 1.
Sure.
Or they can join Tier 2, and they have to make that, that choice within 30 days? Is that?
Well, they have to join the first day of employment, but they can choose which tier they want to go into.
But how, how long do they have to change to, to make that determination?
The day they're hired, they have to.
So, they don't, I mean, they make that determination on day one. We're giving folks 30 days to make the choice of whether they want to join a defined benefit plan or a defined contribution plan.
In addition, Councilman Pruski, I would like to point out that if there were ever an attempt by the administration to make this either mandatory or the only plan, this body or your successors would have to vote on that. So, that's not something that could just happen.
Oh, I, no, I totally understand. And again, my questions are to be clear about what this is, what it isn't, but also, I want to know the intention of the administration right now. Obviously, we have it as an option, it's being presented that way, but I have seen other jurisdictions, not necessarily in Maryland, but others that have gone down the path of trying to get of, get rid of the defined retirement plan, so that's what I wanted to ask. Point crystal clear is that this is meant as an option, there is no plans to move or change that.
In addition, Councilman Pruski, we'd have to negotiate this with all three unions that would be affected by this change.
Understood. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Pruski, also, for those thoughtful questions. So, first of all, let me acknowledge, clearly, a lot of work went into this and effort, so I applaud that. Anything that generates a six-page blue letter from the auditor, obviously, is very complex.
Well, we heard you were concerned that she wasn't working hard enough, so...
For the record, we all know that is not true. So, just a few quick questions. So, I, I understand from the previous testimony that, that this is optional and you intend for it to be optional. So, the concern I have is, since it is optional, is there any dependence based on a certain threshold of employees signing up, or if this does not turn out to be popular and there is not a big subscription, is the county on the hook for any administrative costs or any long-term liabilities if this ends up not being popular with the employees?
I think the only thing we're on the hook for is, it sounds like there's a $10,000 flat annual administration fee, whether you have one participant or 100 participants. So, I don't think that that should be a significant concern.
But, but once this is launched, in the event that it's launched, it is in perpetuity as, like, if one, if one person signs up, the county is obligated to maintain this for eternity, or at least the indefinite future that we can see?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think there's a provision in there that says...
There's a kick-out clause somehow?
Well, the plan has a provision, the legislation does, that allows the county to modify or terminate the plan, and that would mean they'd move that person back into whatever other options were available at that time.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And then, you mentioned negotiating with the unions. So, were the employee groups part of the conception of this?
We brought the, both of the ASME presidents in at the time the legislation was being drafted. I met with both of the presidents, went over what we thought the concept was, brought them in, did a side-by-side comparison, also sent them copies of the draft legislation so that they could look at it, and have also discussed, you know, any changes that we may need to, to make to the legislation going forward.
Okay. Do, do, are you intending, I don't think there's amendments, are you intending to amend it tonight?
Not, not tonight. After meeting with our actuary and speaking with the auditor, we plan to address many concerns that both the administration and the auditor and our actuary have come January. So, at the appropriate time, we are going to recommend that we hold the vote for tonight.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anybody? Mr.?
Yeah, my apologies, Mr. Chairman, actually...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good. Mr. Pruski, you're up.
Just, just one quick question. When I was looking back and within the legislation, I didn't notice an oversight board. We have one for the pension. Is the plans to also have one for this, since employees are going to be getting in? I would assume that there'd be a review board or, you know, something, an oversight committee?
I think this would fall under their purview already as, as part of the, it's, it's a retirement plan, so it would naturally, I think, fall under their purview.
But is that something we have to add to the code? My worry again, if somebody comes in, different county executive or somebody else, we have to think long-term that, that, oh, no, that's not a part of the plan, that's, that's only the, the defined benefit plan.
Councilman, no. I don't believe that we have to add that to the code or the charter. The Pension Oversight Commission actually gets their power through the charter, and they are charged with doing the oversight on any pension benefit, and this is one of those. It doesn't specifically say only one of those plans, so they would naturally take this up.
And again, I appreciate the questions, I just want to say, so the law office perspective would be that this would fall under that oversight committee?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker, I think is next.
Thank you. Ms. Duden, since you were commenting on that, Mr. Pruski brought it up. I believe there's two different committees, right, that are reviewing, would both of those be assigned to reviewing this?
No. So, right now, we have a charter-required Pension Oversight Commission, and this would fall within their purview. We have a Board of Trustees of the existing pension plan, and that is all that's within their purview. So, it's the Pension Oversight Commission that would be charged with reviewing any legislation and commenting back to this body about any possible change if this plan's adopted going forward.
Zach Akers. And, and is that, so, just so I understand, I think you sort of heard you say that that represents people who aren't vested, so if somebody's vested, then they don't qualify to switch over to this plan? Is that what I sort of heard?
We were looking at only those employees that have not yet vested in the current pension plan as being eligible to transfer into the plan.
So the assumption is if they have vested, then they're, they're no longer eligible to transfer?
Yes, sir, for current employees.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. It was going where Mr. Walker went. How long does, I can't remember. How long does it take for a new employee to vest?
As of July 1, 2015, an employee needs 10 years. That's classified. An exempt employee as of July 1, 2014, needs eight years to vest.
So under the current, I mean, if somebody was coming to the county for, you know, they started, said, you know, I've got six years and I'm retiring, or, you know, six years, I'm only doing this until I get out of whatever graduate school or law school, or whatever they may be, then this would be really the only option for them, because if they, they joined our pension plan, they left after six years to go into whatever's the next greatest thing in their life, they would essentially get zero?
Yes. What would happen, Councilman Fink, is they'd get their contributions plus 4.25% interest, and, you know, they relinquish any rights to that service with the county.
And then, under this scenario, six years, they essentially get 12% of their pay per year. 4% they contributed, but 8% the county contributes?
Right. They would be 100% vested, and they could take that money with them to another plan.
And roll it into a 401A.
That's correct.
So really, you know, that employee that's here for less than eight and, or less than 10, this would be the only option for them?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Fink, for that question. It prompted another one that I had. So in the case that someone has not vested yet and they're eligible to switch plans, and we, along the lines, I think, Mr. Pusky and Trumbauer's concerns was, the assumption is that that person is now taking their money away from the pension plan and putting it into the, this new plan that you're setting up. What portion of that money comes over? Is it, is it a month, is it, what's coming out of the pension plan, I guess? Is it just what the, the, the contribution of the employee was plus a certain percentage?
The way the bill's written now would say, it says that the retirement plan would send over 8% per year worth.
So what the, what the employee put in plus 8%?
Right. So the employee puts, in the, Tier One employee puts in 4%.
Right.
The retirement plan would transfer over 8% the way the bill's written now. Part of the work to be done, Mr. Trumbauer, we have put a lot of work into it. There's still more work to be done. And working with the actuary, that 8% number is a concern because of the impact it could have on the, on the existing pension plan. So we're taking a hard look at that, and that probably will be, it will be a subject of an amendment when we come back in, in January.
And so you mentioned Tier Ones. I'm assuming that the Tier Two people come over at a different rate? Is there separate rates then?
Yeah, a Tier Two employee right now doesn't make any employee contribution. They only get, they only get half the benefit. They accrue 1% per year of employment as opposed to 2% per year under Tier One. So the, the, as the bill is written now, they would, you know, they would not have any employee contribution, so there wouldn't be anything coming over if they transferred from Tier Two into this plan.
Got it.
Most, most of the folks that, I think, I think most of the folks that opt for Tier Two don't want to have their paycheck reduced by a pension contribution.
And what percentage of that is it employees that are Tier Two? Is it pretty slim?
It's a very small, I don't have the exact, I can get that for you.
Just curious. And I'm assuming that you're, the concern is that the rate at 8% is too high, that it'll probably be most likely adjusted down. Not putting words in your mouth, but that's what my end...
Yeah, that's, that's the gist of it, and it's all part of the actuarial...
Sure. Assumptions.
Science that goes behind these things, that the, in the early years, your normal contribution is much smaller than it would be at the longer you're here, and we got to take that into consideration as far as what can be transferred from one to the other. And the other issue also, then, is, okay, you're not vested in the employer's contrib- if you transfer over, you're not vested, by definition of this bill, you're not vested in the employer's contribution, but to the extent that you move money over, boom, you get vested in that amount for the number of years that you've worked with the county up to that point.
Right. Excellent. Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Duden, Ms. Tickleston?
Yeah, I have a couple of points of clarification. Ms. Duden, you, you were talking about the Pension Oversight Commission and that it would have authority over this plan. Does the Pension Oversight Commission also have authority over our current deferred compensation plan?
Deferred compensation, no. That's, that's not a pension plan. That's a employee savings plan, so they would have no role with the deferred compensation or, what's it, a 403B?
457B.
Or 457B. They have no role with that. That's an employee voluntary savings plan and not a pension plan, per se.
Okay.
And there's no, no county money going into any 457.
Right. Okay, so another point of clarification. You gave me a list of 544 employees, 550, whatever it was, and you were talking about the unions. On that list of people that have been hired, it was a list of people that have been hired since December, on or after December 1, 2014. Did that have any unionized employees on it?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Because I didn't have the, the designations on there as far as who was represented.
I can get that for you if you'd like.
All right. And then to clarify with Tier Two, that those who transfer with Tier Two, right now, they would get 8% as well? No, no employee contribution coming over because they didn't put any in, but they would get a full 8%?
That's correct, the way it's written now, but, but we acknowledge after discussions with you and amongst ourselves that that is a mistake, and that will be the subject of an amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. Anybody else? Any other questions? In that case, we'll open up the public hearing. And then we have two people. I'm sorry, was there anything else?
Chairman, while you do that, can I say something unrelated?
Yes.
I just want to apologize to the council administrator, because she very kindly saved those reserved seats for myself and my staff and informed us of that. And we didn't sit in them when we came in and seemed to create a misunderstanding about the reservation of those seats. And I just want to apologize for that.
No, thank you very much. So the clarification is they were, they were for...
They were for county staff.
County staff. Thank you. Thank you very much.
For the muckney mucks.
Mr. Hammond, you look particularly Christmasy this evening, sir.
But he can't see that.
Well, at this time of the year, I do get to say ho, ho, ho. Most of the time of the year, you know what else I say. It rhymes with ho, ho, ho.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have two people signed up for the public hearing. Would they come down? Mike Akers and Tim Kingston? Please. And if there's anybody else who'd like to testify on this, please come down now. We have four more seats if you'd like to join us. Thank you. Mr. Akers?
Thank you, and good evening, members of the council. My name is Mike Akers, and I'm just getting over a cold, so I sound a little funny here. And I'm president of Anne Rundle County Public Employees Local 582, 101 North Crane Highway, Glenburn, Maryland. Shortly before the election, we had the opportunity to interview candidates who were running for county executive, including current county executives, Steve Schu. The purpose of that meeting was first to let him know what services our members provide for Anne Rundle County citizens and the importance of our pay and benefit packages, and to find out what his priorities were if he was indeed elected county executive. When we discussed our defined benefit pension plan, we provided him with the long negotiated history that we had to, in order to get that plan, and the importance of that plan, not only to our employees, but to Anne Rundle County, because it helps with recruitment and retention. If you want excellent services, you have to have excellent employees, and you can't do that without decent pay and benefits. At that time, he assured us that he had no intention of decreasing the benefits provided in the current plan. But, but he also stated that our plan was not a one-size-fits-all, and he was correct in that, and that at some point during his administration, if he was elected, he would like to introduce the plan that he's introducing now, which is a voluntary 401A, actually a defined contribution plan as an option for employees. So when the legislation came about a few months ago, and we were informed by the county, you know, we were not surprised. We knew it was coming. Now, while most of the employees who come to work for the county, at least in our bargaining unit, I'm only speaking for them, intend on working for the county for 25, 30 years or longer, there are some who come in later in life or as a second career. Not very long ago, those same shorter-term employees could come to the county and invest in our defined pension, pension, defined benefit pension plan.
Could you, could you summarize, sir?
Well, I'd like to continue. I think it's important.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask you to, to cease for the moment here unless we ask your question.
You don't like Tom?
No.
No, we, I'm sorry, we can't actually do that. And I, I, I need to stay consistent, so let me do that, please. Mr. Kingston?
Gentlemen, ladies, good evening. My name's Tim Kingston. I'm the president of ASME Local 2563. I'm a proud employee for the last 12 years as of November 30. I oversee 294 members out of 32 different classifications. As the previous administration had talked and Mike was talking, we've met with Steve Schu about this type of plan. We met with the administration. We've talked amongst ourselves. Long and short, you know, I am as the representative of my group here in support of 9517. We believe having an additional plan, though we know that there's going to be some amendments, and obviously, we want to look at that, we believe having an option set for those employees that come to the county that don't plan to make this a career, but is either a short-term process or a second job, having the same abilities or some abilities to have a additional retirement, it's not a bad thing. Our groups together are almost over 1,000 employees. We represent them vigorously, and we're here. We believe that this, in general, is a good benefit, and we would ask you to support it when the vote comes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Akers, did you say you were in support of this legislation, or, or no?
Yeah, we would be in support of the legislation because primarily when the pension benefit was changed from a five to 10-year vesting, you've got a lot of people that fall in the cracks now. And also, when the healthcare benefit was changed from five to 10 years, we feel that for recruitment and retention for some of these short-term employees, that this plan will be a benefit, provided that the administration, this plan, has no effect on the financial stability of the plan that we currently have.
Thank you.
So we'd be in support of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. That, the public hearing on Bill 9517 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9517.
Bill 9517, An Ordinance Concerning Anne Rundle County Employees Retirement Savings Plan.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Walker?
Before Ms. Schultz asks for the hold, I would just like to be added as a co-sponsor to 9517.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pusky?
I was gonna make a motion to hold, but...
Oh, okay. Well, you, you can still do that after she asks you to.
Yeah.
Ms. Schultz, go ahead.
Thank you. Before I make the request to hold the vote, I just would like to reiterate that the administration has no plan or intention to eliminate the defined benefit plan and believe it is an important part of our overall compensation package. So I just would like that to be on the record. After just, like I said earlier, after discussing this bill with our actuary and the Pension Oversight Commission and the auditor, we asked the council to hold the vote on this bill tonight, because we like to address the concerns of this bill. We understand it's a very complicated bill, and we would like to get it right.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to hold till the first meeting in January, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Call the roll on that. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold Bill 9517 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 8717 as amended.
Bill Number 8717 is amended, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, transfer of funds, and supplementary appropriations.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Kaylee Schultz from the county executive's office. With me at the table is John Hammond from the budget office, and Nancy Duden from the law office, if she is needed. Bill 8717 provides for the transfer of appropriation authority between county departments within the general fund and other funds, and addresses unappropriate fund balances from grants. The council adopted many amendments, and we ask that you pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Anything further from the administration?
No, I think we're just, you've amended it, and we're just here for the final vote, hopefully.
Okay, but we have a public hearing on this, right? We will now open the, the public, I'm sorry, any other questions up here? We'll now open the public hearing. We have signups, please.
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
I don't think we have any, anybody signed up, but it was, with anybody in the signal movement from the audience, the public, the public hearing on Bill 8717 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8717 as amended.
Bill Number 8717 is amended, an ordinance concerning current expense budget, transfer of funds, and supplementary appropriations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 8717 as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Peruka?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill 8717 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9217.
Bill Number 9217, an ordinance concerning subdivision and development, adequate public facilities, school utilization chart.
Thank you.
This is just for a discussion.
Okay, this is just, we're just having a discussion and vote here. Administration, Ms. Schultz?
Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Mr. Grasso's bill.
Oh, excuse you, Mr. Grasso.
I was gonna be rude. I figured you eventually look over here.
You know, I find myself favoring this side. I'm looking this way, and my back's over here, so I'm pleased, because this is the, this is the, this is the side with decorum and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso, I apologize.
As for some of the people that don't, that aren't aware of what this bill is all about, I've talked to the council members, and I'm trying to push hard to addressing our, our overpopulation of our schools. So the way the current law is right now, that if a school utilization chart is at 100% or less, a developer can move forward to build a development. Even though it may be one seat under in that school, that development could be 1,300 houses and wind up putting 2,000 kids in that school system, they'll still be able to move forward with this. So what I did is I've kind of adopted two ways to handle this, and the first bill was to take the 100% capacity on schools that are going to be affected by a development and knock it down to 95%. So if you've got a 500-capacity school, you're talking about having a 25-seat buffer, where now, whereas now we don't have any. Now, this is not the, the silver bullet that's going to correct the problem. The second piece of legislation that's coming out, and I'll say it all, you folks that support this, stay tuned, this will address the problem. And with council support, we'll be moving, I believe, this county in the right direction. So this bill alone is just to give us a little bit of cushion to what we've got now at 100%, to take the capacity of a school and reduce it now to 95%, and that's pretty much it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Administration, now. Administration, Ms. Schultz?
I can just voice that the administration continues to have concerns with this bill, as we did earlier this year, because the development should be regulated and legislated through the general development plan.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask Mr. Cheknevik if, I had asked him two weeks ago if he could validate the numbers on that school utilization chart to make a determination if those school numbers were correct.
Well, the chart, Alex Cheknevik, Chief Operating Officer, Anne Rundle County Public Schools. Well, the numbers you're referencing are not part and parcel to the bill before you tonight. They'll be relative to the January bill. Those, in fact, those numbers on that chart that will come before you in January are in fact correct.
So they are correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Grasso?
Once again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a stab at the administration, but it is what it is, and it's the truth. We've got a problem, and everybody realizes that we have a problem. And the answer to the administration is just take the can and keep kicking it down the road. They've proposed nothing. In fact, they, they haven't tried to do anything to slow down the problem that we are having in our schools being overcrowded. And the fact of the matter is, we all know what the real issue is, what the campaign contributions are. We know that's what it is. You don't have to take my word for it. Just go look at who's getting what from who, and you're gonna vote in that direction of what you're gonna believe. As everybody knows, that I, I introduced legislation before to stop all upzoning throughout Anne Rundle County, until the general development plan was done. So we don't go along like a bunch of buffoons in the dark, trying to figure out how this county is growing. And yet, we were against that also. When are we going to be something against, for something, and when are we gonna stop kicking the can down the road? The second piece of legislation is gonna do a seat count, and it's gonna force the developer at the table before they turn around and they build a development to look at how many kids they're gonna put in our school system, and they are going to have to mitigate the problem before they're going to build that school system. Putting money in an impact fee is not the correct way to solve this... Putting money in an impact fee is not the correct way to solve this problem, because it just goes into a general bucket for that district. It won't address that specific situation. Councilman Smith has a development over there on Ritchie Highway, North County Cedar, Cedar Hill, I guess you would call it. It's looking to put 1,300 to 1,400 houses, and you're going to bank on it that you're going to put 2.2 kids in every one of those houses, and that the development has not even been mentioned, nothing's been mentioned about building a school, nor they provided any kind of land to do this. And so, once again, you know, administration, when will they support something that is to protect the kids from being overcrowded? I guess we'll see. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Any other discussion? Ms. Schultz, do you have anything further?
No, sir. Thank you.
Nothing further? I understand there is a council amendment.
She's going to read the title of the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bill.
I'm going to read the title of the amendment.
Oh.
Okay. Amendment number one. This amendment adds a sunset clause to limit the length of time that this ordinance shall be in effect.
Thank you, Mr. Pusky.
Motion to adopt.
I'm sorry, motion to adopt?
Second. I'll first it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to thank Mr. Hager. I'm sorry for interrupting your breakfast at 9:30 on Sunday morning. Mr. Hager was kind enough to take my call. But actually, this past week, for transparency, I want to explain how we got to this amendment. I think it's important. Certainly, as many of you know from the last council meeting, we talked about the importance of all stakeholders, school board, the county council, the planning and zoning office, all being involved. But certainly, one of the things that I was looking at is to make sure that there is the possibility for mitigation. Well, one of the concerns that came up in some of the amendments that I was proposing was related to single-subject rule and also the legality of trying to add to the current bill. And those things were certainly given to me both from law office and from council here not to include those. However, I was discussing with Mr. Hager, the administration is currently working on a impact fee review, which I wasn't aware of. And I also found out by actually going back in the council minutes that the last one was done, I believe, in 2009 and then implemented in 2012. I certainly emailed the council members, and I would encourage the administration to do this. I think we need to look at that impact fee a little bit more frequently. I know we're obviously doing it now, but I certainly think, considering some of the issues that we're having, that's something that makes sense. I also think we need to be innovative. I, I've been very clear, and I voted on it on several occasions, for mitigation. Broadneck High School is an example, where an addition was added on by a developer and addressed the issue. And I think the sponsor and others are trying to address the issue, and that's where I'm going to get at. But we also have the General Development Plan coming up, and whether these folks that are sitting here or someone else serves on the next council, that will impact also where we're going. And I think the next council should take a look at that, because those decisions that they make, whether they upzone, downzone, will have an impact upon what that threshold might be, plus if the impact fees are raised, that also may address the issue. So I'm asking my fellow colleagues to take a look at this, certainly put it under consideration, because I think, again, brings up the issue again. I think by that point, we'll have some additional information. And my understanding, so I'm clear for the record, and this is why the date is chosen for my amendment, January 1st, 2020, or the adoption of the updated General Development Plan. And, Mr. Hager, my understanding is December of 2019 is likely when we'll be done with the General Development Plan. Am I correct? That's the plan?
Correct.
Okay. So that's why that date is chosen. Obviously, the GDP will be done, and whatever decisions those council members make will impact, obviously, what that threshold should be, and hopefully, by this point, by that point, Mr. Shaknovich will come forward to us and say, maybe there's been some approbate, you know, based upon that in terms of what we're doing. So that's the angle that I'm taking. Certainly, I think there should be greater discussion in future, possible legislation for mitigation, but right now, this is what I'm proposing in front of the council, and I did email everyone, you know, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pusky. Mr. Grasso?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Pusky, for amendment well done. I couldn't think of a better, it's a great one. And the reason why, folks, I support this is because we've got a problem, and we have to turn the faucet off, okay? A lot of problems can happen within two years before the GDP is done, and I promise these, these developers are going to come out in full force, and you and me, the taxpayers, are going to be paying to make them rich. That's what it really boils down. I don't have any problem with anybody making money, but one thing I can't stand is when they make a boatload of money and they leave me with all the expenses. That's the problem that we've got. The second thing I wanted to talk shortly about is Mr. Pusky talked about the impact fees that developers are supposed to be paid. The early part of 2000, if I understand what was told to me correct, there was a study done of what the impact should be, and it was brought before the council, not this council, but prior councils. And that council chose to make the amount smaller. And once again, who's getting the campaign contributions and which way people votes, vote on the subject? So it was already artificially reduced the first time in the early 2000s. And then in 2009, it came before the council again, and because we were going like this in the economy, the council turned around and reduced the impact fee again. So you had an artificial first number the first time, and you even turned around and reduced it again to where we are today. And that is the reason we have the problems we have. It has to be understood here that directing money specifically in an impact fee, and an impact fee affects infrastructure along with schools and everything like, it's not only the silver bullet, because when you just throw money into a bucket, it's not going to get addressed to a specific project that may be causing the problem, okay? And this legislation, and the next one that's coming, will address each specific project. A developer wants to go in a Pete Smith area, they're going to look at the schools that are going to be affected. They're going to have to pay to fix the problem before they make the problem worse, and before you and me wind up spending $30, $40 million for an elementary school and $100 million for a high school. That's what the legislation there is to protect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thanks. Just very briefly, and I, I never want to interrupt Mr. Grasso when he's doing one of his orations, but I believe that...
Here we go.
Well, so I, I think a minor detail you may have glazed over with the previous version of the impact fee legislation, and I know this because I came and testified a lot at it. The end, the bill that that former council passed reduced the impact fee for, I think, a year, but then it phased in increases, so when it was fully phased in, it was higher. Is that correct, Ms. Tate?
It's, the end result was the fees were phased in to be 80% of the fee that was recommended by the consultant that the council...
But that was a higher...
It was higher. The impact fees have gone up since, since the early 2000s. They just didn't go up quite as much as what the consultants were telling us.
Yeah. So, anyway, Mr. Grasso was correct. They did go down before they went up.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Mr. Walker?
I was just going to say the same thing Mr. Trumbauer did, because I was around at that time paying attention as well. Even though we weren't on the council, we were...
I think we were on different sides of the issue, too.
I'm sorry?
You were on the impact fee.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Grasso, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, is there any other discussion? Madam Secretary, would you please read amendment number one?
I read the amendment. I shall call the roll.
Mr. Chairman?
Please call the roll.
Wait.
I'm sorry. The administrat, please forgive me.
May the administration comment on the amendment, please? I will defer to Planning and Zoning Officer Phil Hager to comment on the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to congratulate the members of the council for attempting to, to address a difficult question, a difficult problem that we have with regards to this. And councilmen, with, with respect to my, my breakfast preparation, I was in the middle of frying bacon and making omelets, so my siblings may never forgive you.
I'm sorry.
They said, who is calling him in the middle? Because it's my job on Sunday mornings, is to fix breakfast. But I, I digress. One of the, one of the challenges is, is that, is that when we get into situations like this, there's a tendency on the part of some people within the larger community to oversimplify a particular, a particular problem. And I think we had a lot of colorful analogies two weeks ago when we were discussing this difficulty, and, and we used a lot of different analysis of basement flooding, et cetera. One of the challenges with, with adopting a legislation without the amendment that's being proposed tonight is that it, it applies a remedy that denies us the opportunity for the full range of creativity that's available to us within this community. There are many, many ways that we can move forward with addressing this particular difficulty. And if we were to adopt a particular level of, of, of open-closed analysis without some measure of either termination of that process or the ability to integrate new solutions in that, in that interim, I think we, we don't do ourselves the, the full justice that we have available with regards to coming up with good solutions. And this, the amendment that's being proposed sunsets the, the bill, which does not perpetually kick the can down, down the road, as, as, has been used as the analogy. It does sunset that, that can-kicking, and hopefully, by then, we will have a better opportunity to have more solutions available to us and more, more tools in our toolbox that, that this issue will not be the one that we're wrestling with today.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Hager, with respect to the, the General Development Plan, I know one of the speakers who spoke earlier had talked about the GDP having more teeth, if you will, enforcement. So at the conclusion of, of this piece of legislation and the GDP being developed, does that mean the administration is more amenable to having the more rigid guidelines when it comes to the General Development Plan and how we, I mean, obviously, the council will have to play a role in that as well, when it comes to self-control, if you will. But what's the administration's stance on that General Development Plan, once it is developed?
One of the difficulties is, is that the courts and the, the, the annotated code of Maryland define the plan as a guide, as, as a tool for guidance. Where, where the, where the need for action on the part of the, of the administration and this council, and every administration and every council in every jurisdiction across the state of Maryland, is that they need to do a very good job of adopting the necessary implementation mechanisms to make sure that the guidance that's identified in the, in these documents, which we call the General Development Plan, are put into place so that the, so that they, the visions that's articulated by the planning process actually manifest themselves on the ground in terms of, 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 of the teeth that you're talking about, so that the outcome of the process, and it's a continually iterative process, that the results reflect what the people who participated in the plan are hoping to see as a result of that participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
No. No.
Anything else? Then, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Just because I vote against all sunset amendments, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please, oh, Bill number 9217 as amended will be heard on January 2nd, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9317.
Bill number 9317, An Ordinance Concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District.
The administration, Ms. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kaylee Schultz, on behalf of the County Executive's Office, with me at the table is Tomio Debo from Budget Office and Greg Swain from Law. Bill 9317 obligates the county to levy a special tax on the Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District, starting in fiscal year 2019, to repay the $475,000 loan to be used for repair and maintenance of community property, including the main pier, community pool, community tennis courts, and clubhouse. The repayment term of the loan is 10 years. We will offer an amendment at the appropriate time to address the auditor's concern with the year that is stated in the bill.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll now open the public hearing. Has anybody signed up for this? I don't think there's any sign-up sheet. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9317.
Bill number 9317, An Ordinance Concerning Sherwood Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Is there any other discussion? I believe there's an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one. This amendment corrects the fiscal year during which the assessment necessary to repay the loan will commence.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pusky?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you. Bill number 9317 as amended will be heard on January 2nd, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9417.
Bill number 9417, An Ordinance Concerning Disposition of Real Property Transfer to Governmental Entities.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Ms. Schultz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kaylee Schultz from the County Executive's Office. With me from Department of Central Services is Christine Romans and Samantha Harris, and Jason Fetterman from the Law Office. Bill 9417 allows for a more expeditious transfer of property to other governmental entities, such as a state or federal agency like the State Highway Administration. Other governments frequently look to acquire property for a public purpose, and time is frequently of the essence. Creating a more streamlined process to surplus and dispose of properties that have been identified by governmental entities would be of a more efficient and cost-saving process. Once the property is identified, the new process will include the declaration of the surplus property by the central services officer, based on polling of county offices, surplus property by the central services officer based on polling of county offices, departments, and agencies. The Department of Public Works and Recreation and Parks will be polled to ensure there's no preservation or recreational suitability. In addition, if the consideration for the transfer of fee simple title to real property is equal or greater than 75% of the appraised value, fee simple title to the real property may be transferred to the requesting entity without further approvals. If the property is less than 75% of the appraised value, the property may not be transferred without county council resolution. I will now ask Christine and Samantha to give real-life examples on how this would be used.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you. In the two years since I've been with Central Services, we've had just six examples of how this could be used. Five of them were with S.H.A. and one of them was the Housing Commission for Anaromno County. For the Housing Commission example, that was a $1, $0 transfer, and so that would have obviously come to the council. But for several of the S.H.A. ones that have been proposed, they needed the property for stormwater management for roads, local roads. So it's a sliver of land. It generally has zero value because it's right next to a, you know, road that's got a state highway number on it. And it's always, all of these are always done for the public good. There's always some public benefit to them. These are not going into private hands. It's not looking like, you know, we're going to lose tax benefit or anything like that. It literally is just for the public good. So to streamline the process to, it's just government-to-government transfers is all we're looking for here, and that's the intent behind this measure.
Thank you, Ms. Romans. Any questions, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker. Mr. Walker had his lead on first.
I was just going to say, you know, there's, I guess there are some things that the auditor mentioned in her blue letter that, some issues that she raised. I don't understand why it's such a burden to bring it to the council. I mean, I guess, you know, the question becomes if, what if the county was to give land to the state that the state then went and used for some purpose that citizens of the community didn't want?
Yeah.
And then we basically have been cut out of that process. We have no vote or say in it. And if it's something that's of substantial size, it just feels like it should come to the council.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. It's, in terms of coming to the council, it's not a burden. It's obviously just a timing issue. Some of the projects that S.H.A. wants to move forward with, and I will say, I see this being used primarily with the State Highway Administration, those projects take a while to develop and is, once they have the project plan in place, they'd like to move forward with getting the permit and getting the construction done. In terms of what could, that state entity could potentially do or other governmental entity could potentially do that could harm the citizens of the state, excuse me, of our county, most of those projects, in fact, I can't think of one that doesn't have some sort of public process on their end. So while maybe you wouldn't have a hearing here in this chamber is about the project, the state would because they're required to, just as part of their normal project planning.
Right, but the people who would be making the decisions on that aren't elected officials. They would be appointees and therefore not really accountable to the voters.
And again, that gets back to the public benefit of the project. This is, again, not a money-raising scheme. It's to provide stormwater or runoff for a local road that's a state highway or some sort of engineering thing.
If it was something simple like that, the council would, that would just fly through the council. I don't see why.
I don't think it would have a problem either. It's just a timing issue at that point.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Trumbauer is next, then Mr. Gresso.
Thank you. So I'm just, I'm trying to make sure I understand the constraints that you talked about in your introduction. Is this only government-to-government?
Yes, this is intended only as government-to-government.
Okay, but it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't, so if we gave it to the state, it wouldn't preclude the state from then dispensing it to private, I mean, theoretically.
Theoretically, you are correct. I will say that the ones that we've seen, that's not what we're talking about. The ones that we've seen have been stormwater.
No, I understand. And, I mean, I guess I see both sides of this. I certainly understand your desire to do the no-brainers as quickly as possible. But I do share some of the concern that Mr. Walker and I presume, you know, others have voiced. And I wonder if there isn't another way to do this, and there's some precedent for this, I think, with the council, where you notify, you would notify the council of your intent to do something and we have a certain window to require you to bring it to a bill, or if we don't act, then you can go through with it. I just, I'm hesitant to give up the power completely because while what you say makes sense, you just never know exactly how it's going to play out, and I think that especially for land use issues, this body takes its role very seriously, so.
I'd be happy to consider something like that and talk that over with the administration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gresso.
Well, my personal thing, to cut it short, I would take this legislation and throw it in the trash can, okay? Bottom, what's going to happen with this deal, okay? And it's just what you just said just a moment ago. What's going to happen is it's going to be a little piece of property that's supposed to go government-to-government. But once it hits over to the state, we don't know what's going to happen after that point. I can tell you right now, up in my district, the state gave away, sold some property to one of the developers in my district, and now I got a major apartment complex going in. And I got phone calls and everything asking me about that. And I started worrying myself, did I do something wrong during comprehensive zoning? I said, there is no way in the world I changed zoning over there. I got, I think, four pieces of property and I walked every community to make sure it was right. So this is what can happen. You give it to the state of Maryland, it's out of our hands, and they decide for some reason that they don't want to mess with it anymore, they could wind up selling it to one of our beloved developers, and we have a major problem. I would prefer that everything, every piece of land that leaves this council should come directly through us. That's what I would say. And just like you said, Mr. Trumbauer, we're giving away our power. So that's where I'm at with this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gresso. Mr. Fink?
Just want to clarify, this is only for properties being transferred to another government or quasi-government?
Correct.
So in no way can any of this property under this procedure be given to a developer or a neighbor of the property.
Their process is already in the code for that. This is really just government-to-government.
So it's a new process. Thank you.
And I want to, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gresso, go ahead.
And like they say, thou giveth, thou take it, okay? It's the same thing, and I'm going to say to Mr. Fink once again, once it gets into the state's hands, we have nothing to do with this. This is similar to the General Assembly, turns around and takes the lottery money and says, we're going to put this money off into the side, and we're going to make it a designated fund, and then when things come short, they turn around and take the money and rob it and put it in something else. They can change the laws and do whatever they want. The point is that we're allowing them to give us a piece of Anaromno County, give it to them, and once it's in their hands, they can do whatever they want, and there's nothing we can do about it. Question is, do you want to give it to them? And I don't. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gresso. Appreciate the biblical reference. Anything further? Any other?
Stop beating.
Administration, anything further?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 9417. Yes, sir. There's nobody signed up. If anybody would like to testify, come. Come on. Name and address, please.
Robert E., Robert E. Smith, 1487 Chatham Court, Crofton, Maryland.
Thank you.
As a person that's spent many years as advocate for sustainable growth, I just want, growth, I just wanted to go on record that I support the concerns that Mr. Walker had brought up about this bill. I think they're very valid concerns. I think the other issue, from what I'm hearing from the discussion, is that there's indirect effects with something like this, where their community might be concerned about a project and this, there's a project that might not necessarily be concerned about that particular plot, but if that moves forward, allows a development or some other development to move forward, the community may not be happy with. So as Mr. Walker correctly brought up, it at least brings it back to the council where you guys, and you guys are much more accountable than an appointed state official, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Seeing no other movement in the crowd, the public hearing on Bill 9417 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9417.
Bill 9417, an ordinance concerning disposition of real property transferred to governmental entities.
Any further discussion? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to give one example before we go to vote on it, and that is, in my district, and it wasn't a piece of property that the county turned over to the state. In fact, the state, by eminent domain, took a piece of property from a farmer in my district that was located next to Route 50, and twice since they took that piece of land in the '60s, first of all, they haven't used the piece of property since they took it, even though they forced him to, basically, to sell it to them. And then twice since that time, they've tried to erect a giant salt barn on the property, which the community has been opposed to. And so we have former delegates lobbied against it and killed it back in the early '90s, and the community rose up against it, as well as the state senator and delegates in the area, again, this time, and pushed back on it. And since we, you know, shared our concerns with the governor, he was supportive of that and backed off of the S.H.A. using that property for a salt barn, just because of where it was located. So anyway, there are situations where S.H.A. projects might be well-intentioned, but without influence from the council or a decision from the council, I think it'd be best to have those properties brought before us for disposition, so.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Anything further? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 9417.
Mr. Walker.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Gresso.
Nay.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pousky.
No.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Bill number 9417 is defeated.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read the title of Bill 9617?
Bill number 9617, an ordinance concerning public safety, animal control, community cats.
Mr. Gresso?
Oh, boy, now a happy subject to talk about, the Chum Chum Bill. Okay, this bill was brought to me probably a month or two ago by one of the local vets that's in a rescue and was talking to me about the things that happened to cats. And the bill was crafted, and it's pretty much self-explanatory to where an ear-tipped cat could be brought to the Anaromno County Shelter, I think it's been held for like five days, and then if they don't find an adoption for it or something, it's, the animal is, the animal is put down. So what we did is we proposed legislation to give a second chance to the Chum Chum, along with feral cats, and I'm not going to go through all that, everybody can read the bill, but it's basically what it's doing is it's giving a second chance to our cats, and it's allowing the cat to be released to a caretaker or an animal organization, but before it's released, it's to be given a shot vaccination for rabies. And feral cat is in a similar, same type of situation, and that's pretty much where it stands, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gresso. Any questions? Mr. Smith?
Well, I was going to let, I was going to say some after the administration I spoke.
All right, administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kayla Schultz from the county Executive's Office. With me at the table is Bill Crampf and Robin Catlett from Police and Nancy Duden from the Law Office. The administration supports this bill with minor amendments that we will offer at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Gresso.
Never mind, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Well, there, Mr. Trumbauer?
Unless Mr. Smith wants to pick up his quarter from the pool table.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith.
So essentially, Mr.?
Thank you.
Gresso, I was going to ask the administration if they had any data on other programs in the, either country or other jurisdictions that have shown this as a success or some sort of element that benefits the county?
I will defer to Robin Catlett to answer this question for you.
You said Robin what?
Catlett.
Catlett?
Catch the name, huh?
Okay, I'll just.
There's a reason for it.
I knew your first name. I didn't realize your last name was Cat.
Yep.
And here's the Cat Bill.
Yep, there is, there is a Cat in my name. I can certainly try and answer that. There are certainly, both local and nationally, there are, it's becoming a more common practice in areas to do bills like this, and generally speaking, many of them have been very successful.
And what defines success?
Lower intake rates at shelters, lower euthanasia rates at shelters.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Catlett, just before, I understand there's some amendments and we're also going to hear the public testimony, but before we get into that, I just have a couple baseline questions for you. I mean, does the county, does the administration agree in general that we do have a feral cat issue in the county? And can you talk about the current capacity to deal with that if you do concur it is an issue?
Sure, it's certainly fair to say, and I think most people could vouch for this, that there are cats roaming freely in our community, more than we would like to see. So it's certainly an issue. Unfortunately, currently, we have to operate as complaint-based. We don't have the resources to go out and try and capture all of the cats. So currently, the only way the cats in the community are getting addressed is with the assistance of citizens, who generally speaking would borrow traps from us if they're having a problem, or take to managing the issues on their own with the work of private rescue groups or animal welfare organizations.
And so, just to play that a little further, so if I'm in my community and I notice there are a number of feral cats, or even if I see one, and I want to address it, right now, I call animal control, and you do what?
We would offer to loan you a trap to help you capture the animal.
Okay, that's really the extent of what you're able to offer.
Once it's trapped, we can come and pick it up and remove it.
Okay. Can you quantify it all? I mean, how many calls or requests does your office receive on this issue?
Thousands in terms of cat calls.
Okay.
In terms of those that are specifically related to...
Let's all just take a second to appreciate the pun there. Then we'll let you answer the question. I feel like the crowd wanted to do that.
Okay. In terms of how many of those approximately each year are feral right now, anywhere between about 500 and 700 would be our average.
That's the, that's the amount of complaints that you get?
No, that would be the amount of those that have been deemed feral at the shelter.
I see, okay. And can you, can you estimate what the response rate is? If you're getting thousands of calls and there's 500 cats in the shelter, does that mean you're not responding to everyone, or do some people say, oh, all you can do is give me a trap, you know, have a nice day, I'm not interested?
We absolutely get people that say if that's all the assistance we can offer, that they won't take advantage of those services.
And what, what services might be available to residents if they don't want to work with the county? Are they allowed to shoot a cat with a BB gun? Are they allowed to hire a private company to deal with it? Like, what other non-county options do they have within the law?
Within the, within the law currently, and I might let Nancy take that, certainly I can address the violence towards the animals is definitely illegal, absolutely.
Illegal, okay. I just want to make sure that everybody...
That's why we're not going to allow any shooting of any cats.
Okay.
So...
I mean, I feel like that was a fact we needed on the record, frankly, so thank you for...
That is correct. Like, all joking aside, private citizens cannot shoot a cat, they cannot drown a cat, they cannot do any of those things. Right now, under the law, it's a little bit unclear what is going to happen if a private citizen decides to help that cat and provide, you know, care and love to that cat, because we have a provision in our law that prevents owners of cats from releasing those cats into the wild. And this bill, as I see it, I don't want to speak for Mr. Gresso, but it cleans up a, a kind of gray area for those folks who want to humanely care for a cat but don't want to become its owner and take it into their home.
So this might be someone who sets a bowl of food out or...
Exactly. Sets a bowl of food out or decides to take the cat to a private vet to be spayed or neutered or vaccinated or receive some other type of medical care. It, it creates a situation where those people legally can care for that cat without becoming its defined owner under the code.
Okay. And do residents have an option of hiring an exterminator or some other private service? Or is, would that fall under the, you can't harm a cat?
That would fall under that. There's no legitimate licensed exterminator out there that would kill a cat.
Okay. So I guess in summary, the only option available to residents is to call animal control, and then the only resolution that you can provide is to loan them a trap, currently?
Yeah, currently.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Mr. Smith?
So just, Mr., Ms. Dickinson, you had mentioned that there was no fiscal impact with this bill, I think. Is that different now if you're going to be doing immediations or loaning traps and traps get broken or missed and we have to repurchase? Is there, is there a potential fiscal impact, or is it negligible with what you receive in the annual budget?
Okay, good, I'm on. So there is some potential fiscal impact, the way the bill is currently drafted. There's an implied follow-up that animal control would be doing for those cats that are potentially picked up by community cat caregivers or animal welfare groups, because there's a timeframe in which they would need to provide the trap neuter return or trap neuter release services. There's an agreement in that, and there would be some necessary work for managing that, following up on those things to make sure that they are completed. So there is potential fiscal impact there, as it would take staff resources to manage that and follow up on those things. We're already loaning traps. The bill does not currently, as it's written, address any changes to our trap loaning program. So we don't anticipate any additional fiscal impact that way.
Okay, thank Mr. Vice.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Fink?
I'm sorry, I know we've been talking about this for a couple minutes, but can you walk me through the process today and then the process if this bill passes, what it'll look like tomorrow? For some reason, I'm not wrapping my head around it.
Sure, I'll do my best to do that. So today, if you have a concern with a cat in your neighborhood or community or near your business, if you, if you called our facility to ask for assistance, the option we would give you would be to borrow a trap at no cost to you as a county citizen or resident. We would give you instructions on how to trap the cat. If you trap the cat, you can contact us, we can come and pick up the cat, or you could bring the cat to the shelter, depending on various things regarding the cat, whether it's a friendly cat that maybe is someone's lost pet that's escaped, if it's an aggressive cat, if it's sick or injured, that, those things would impact the outcome of the cat currently. currently. You could also potentially borrow the trap, and if you wanted to trap neuter return it, things are a little bit hazy as to whether or not that would be okay or not. Citizens also do that on their own, and some welfare groups assist with doing that on their own. This bill, as it's written...
So if they bring the cat back to you, what do you do with it?
It would depend on various factors about the cat.
It's a wonderful cat, just lovely to have around.
Wonderful cat, lovely to have around. We would hold it in the facility for five business days. During that time, it would be up for adoption, and it would continue to stay up for adoption as long as it seemed happy and healthy.
So we keep it for three years?
We don't have set time limits. Thankfully, in the six and a half years I've been there, we haven't had a cat there that long, but we've certainly had them there for many months.
So we don't euthanize them?
Not based on a specific time limit. We try our very best not to.
I mean, if it's a mean nasty cat, then...
If it's a nasty cat, if it's sick or injured, then euthanize. But we do our very best not to euthanize over time restraints.
Okay. And then, if this bill passes?
If this bill passes, that would still be an option for the cat. Additionally, the option, it would be clear in the law that trap neuter return was an option for the citizen as well.
And what's the purpose of trapping and returning?
The purpose of trapping and returning would be so that if it wasn't a friendly cat, it wouldn't end up euthanized, and it would decrease the intake of shelter animals.
So why would I bother trapping if I'm just going to let it go?
So that it doesn't continue to procreate.
So I take it down the street and let my neighbor deal with it essentially?
I think you're missing the middle part. It's not trap and return, it's trap neuter and return. And the way this is written, it's really trap neuter vaccinate and return. So it would guarantee that if that cat was trapped, it would be both neutered and receive at least one rabies vaccination.
Okay. So the new part of this bill, we give the trap to the homeowner, the homeowner traps it, brings it to us, we neuter it, we vaccinate it, and then we return it?
Technically, the way this bill is written, if it came to us, we would rabies vaccinate it. An animal welfare group or a community cat caregiver could then come and pick up the cat at no cost to them, and they would be responsible for providing the neuter and return services.
So this bill allows us to give it to the SPCA? I'm lost here. Where does this bill go?
No, not the SPCA, but for instance, some group, any group that, say, you call them the cat lovers of Anarundel County, and they have an interest in seeing that these animals are humanely cared for but not owning them and not housing them. So they, and it goes on right now, even though it's not clear that it's allowed to go on right now, they, in an attempt to lower the feral cat population, will neuter or spay the cats, which takes some time, but over the years will lower the feral cat population. And by vaccinating the cats, it will also lower the chance that they spread rabies or get rabies. And it's that aspect that makes people free to do those humane services without becoming the quote-unquote codified owner of that cat, so that they have to take it inside their home.
Okay. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Anybody else? Anything further, Ms. Schultz?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, then we'll open up the public hearing on Bill 9617. I'll call the first six people. Please come down and take seats. Carolyn Bourne, Carolyn Corn, I'm sorry, put me in that wrong. Suzanne Gold, Keith Burnham, Tracy Paulson, Molly Armus, and Donna Morrow.
It's Kilborn.
Kilborn, I'm sorry. Kilborn.
But we have someone who has to leave, so we're going to let Donna go first.
And who is this?
My name is Donna Morrow, and I live at 101 Maple Drive in Annapolis, Anarundel County.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I'm here tonight to testify to the effectiveness of its trap neuter return program in our community, and to ask the council to support the Community Cat Bill 9617. As I mentioned, I live in Hillsmere. The Hillsmere Board was approached in August of 2016 by volunteers and offered to pilot a county-approved cat program. My understanding is, we were selected for the pilot by the county because of longstanding issues that constituents had with cats. The Hillsmere Board was immediately receptive. After working with the residents, including, you know, cat haters, cat lovers, and a lot of neutral people, a total of 36 community cats were trapped by volunteers last September. All were fixed and vaccinated with non-taxpayer grant money. Nineteen of the 36 cats were returned. That's a 50% reduction in the cats' population that was achieved with little or no impact to the county staff and resources. The rest that were not returned were adopted out. They were young kittens and able to be adopted. Video testimony was presented to the county in November of 2016 of two of my Hillsmere neighbors that were complaining the most about the cats to Animal Control for some time. These neighbors agreed to participate in the pilot and expressed their great frustration with the cat situation, and that Animal Control had really been unable to help them prior to this. One year after the pilot started, they expressed their high level of satisfaction with the project and recommended to the county to adopt a community cat program. I also have a letter from the Hillsmere Community President praising the program and encouraging county executives to support adopting it for the county. In this last August of 17, we did submit a public information request to the Animal Control to see if any further complaints had been registered.
Thank you, ma'am. I have to ask you to stop. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony.
I can submit these too.
And by the way, thank you all for your patience in waiting to this late part of the night to testify. Thank you for your patience. Ms. Kilborn?
I'm Carolyn Kilborn, the founder of Maryland Votes for Animals and a resident of Hillsmere in Anarundel County. Maryland Votes for Animals advocates for all animals, wildlife, farmed animals, and pets. I've worked on the pet overpopulation issue since 2011, so I hope my experience is of value to you. Both Maryland and Anarundel County have had a pet overpopulation problem for the past decade that costs the taxpayer $8 million per year. In Anarundel County, approximately 5,000 cats enter various shelters every year, and about 1,000 of them are euthanized because the county's inundated. It's a waste of taxpayer dollars to shelter and euthanize these cats year after year because it does nothing to prevent the problem. Add to that the approximately 100,000 outdoor cats in the county that live mostly in low-income areas, where people do not have the financial wherewithal to deal with the problem. I can say this for sure. The status quo isn't working. It hasn't worked for 10 years running and will never work. Animal Control doesn't have the resources to respond to all these calls, and most people don't want the cats euthanized. Plus, residents won't allow trappers on their property if the cats are going to be euthanized. But there's good news. Maryland has created the statewide spay-neuter program in 2013. The program offers spay-neuter services for cats, whether they're owned or unowned. A process called trap-neuter return is recognized by the state as part of the solution. In closing, there is a simple way to solve our cat overpopulation problem. We should make use of the funds available by the state and other sources. We should make use of volunteers. A few minor changes to the code would save lives, save taxpayer dollars, provide residents with needed services. Therefore, I respectfully ask for your support of 9617.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Kilborn. Appreciate it.
I have a copy of my testimony.
Suzanne Gold?
My name's Suzanne Gold. I'm in Edgewater. There are basically three options on how to deal with cat overpopulation. They all require boots on the ground in neighborhoods, getting cooperation from people, and rounding up cats. Okay? The one, there's three, these three ways. One, fix the cats and put them in a sanctuary. Two, euthanize them. Or, three, do TNR. That's it. Those are really basically the only options. Sanctuaries are an option, but rarely exercised because they're too expensive. Remove and euthanize, nothing in the code right now prevents that from happening. Property owners and the county can do this, but it's not widely exercised relative to the huge size of the problem. The third option, trap-neuter and return. The current county code, as you've heard, does not recognize this as an option. Now, look at the bill. The bill just adds TNR for a choice, for property owners, a choice that Anarundel Department of Health told Animal Control two years ago that they would not oppose. Second, it doesn't prevent Animal Control from enforcing abandonment and pounding injured or sick cats, nor does it take away constituents' rights to address nuisance cats. The bill does, though, however, give protection to healthy, fixed cats that are not being a nuisance by allowing their redemption without charge. And you might ask, well, why? Because to do otherwise will undermine the trust of most citizens, and they will then opt to leave the cats outside on their property to breed. What this legislation, or types of it, has done in the past for other counties and places that have adopted it, is it attracts, excuse me, funding and volunteers, which brings services to the low-income areas for both indoor pet cats and their outdoor cats.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Keith Burnham?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Keith Burnham. I live in Belclaire Court in Jessup, Maryland, in District 1. I actually work for the Department of Defense as an intelligence analyst, and I'm actually here to present a letter, a case study, if you will, at the request of Craig Wolinsky, who's the property manager for the Corporate Office Properties Trust, or CLPT, at the National Business Park in Annapolis Junction, nearby, for the past nine years. Craig wanted to be here tonight, but his daughter's Christmas concert is tonight, unfortunately. So I have excerpts of Craig's letter, and I paraphrase them for time. The property, I'll quote, "The property I manage is 400 acres and includes 4 million square feet of office space. It stretches from Route 32 to 175, with 295 is the eastern boundary and is adjacent to key defense and knowledge-based government installations. We've received numerous rewards for our commitment in areas such as customer service and employee relations. As the property manager, one of the issues I struggled with from the beginning was the large number of breeding cats on the property, which were significantly impacting everyone. As far as addressing the issue, Animal Control would only get involved if there was a public health risk or a cat was seriously injured. As for paying a trapper to remove the cats to be euthanized, this would have negatively impacted our employee and community relations. Besides, we also recognize that without involving the people working at the site in a solution, we would be unsuccessful in addressing the cat problem long-term. So about a year and a half ago, we began working with a volunteer to implement a community cat program. This includes education, training, outreach, problem-solving, trap-neuter return, and adoption. Over 60 cats and kittens have been trapped, neutered, and given rabies vaccinations. Well over half of these cats were not returned, but rather adopted. Since implementation of the program, complaints, problems, and cats have all drastically declined, so we continue to use this approach. Sincerely, Craig Wolinsky, CLPT property manager."
Thank you.
...for that as a success story.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Ms. Chair?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just, so, since you were essentially, like, entering in testimony for someone else, do you have written, do you have a letter that you're submitting?
I do.
Okay. Oh, I see. Ms. Gray has it. Thank you. I just always get a little nervous when that happens, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Paulson?
Do I need to move on? Hi, my name's Tracy Paulson. I live in Davidsonville. Until the fall of 2015, I served as the property manager for a large HOA in Edgewater called Southover Colony. And tonight, I'll share with you a brief success story that I was proud to be part of in 2012. Utilizing TNR, trap-neuter return, we implemented a community cat program in a 250-acre mixed-use area at no cost to the county. It was successful not only during my tenure, but according to people who are still working the area today, it's still effective in reducing the reproduction of stray and feral cats. Before the program was introduced to us by a volunteer, we had a big cat problem, and we were unable to find a long-term solution. Daily, I receive calls from frustrated residents who complained about how the cat nuisance behavior was affecting their quality of life in their community. The methods we had tried to use to solve the problem did not help with the overall reproduction of the cats. Animal Control would lend us a trap. We even purchased some of our own, but the one-off trapping didn't curb the overall issue. The cats continued to reproduce at a rate that we couldn't keep up with. They had food sources from restaurants on the property, and residents thought that they were doing the right thing by feeding them. The Homeowners Association legal team informed us that, since it was a known risk, we were at more risk ourselves by not doing anything. So the leadership chose to implement a managed community cat program, granting access to our common area property to the team of volunteers for mass trapping, the spay-neuter, and maintaining the cats. When the Homeowners Association program started, there were 40 cats at large. According to the volunteers still working the area, there are only 15 cats now with no new kittens on the scene. After implementing the community cat program, which incorporated educating residents about the effect of letting loose unfixed animals, stray feeding practices, and incorporating mass trappings, we swiftly gained control of our cat problem.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Molly Armus?
Hi, my name is Molly Armus. I'm a staff attorney with Alka Cat Allies. We're a national advocacy organization based in Bethesda, Maryland. I'm here on behalf of our more than 590 supporters here in Anarundel County, testifying in support of Bill 9617, which removes barriers to trap-neuter return, the only humane and effective approach to community cats. As you heard, in the past, Animal Control has dealt with community cats by either leaving the population to flourish, or by attempting to remove them and pound them in shelters. Since most of these cats are not socialized, they are unadoptable, and they are killed by the shelter. This is cruel, expensive, and ineffective. The population continues to grow, public health concerns are not addressed, and no solutions are put in place to assist those with nuisance complaints. Instead of repeating the same ineffective policies that have been in place for decades, communities are using TNR to address community cat populations. TNR is the present and the future of Animal Control. Today, over 650 municipalities, including your neighbors, DC and Baltimore, have adopted a TNR ordinance or policy, and thousands more are conducting grassroots, volunteer-led programs. TNR has been increasingly embraced because it is sound public policy, stabilizes the population, helps government save money by decreasing cat intake, euthanasia, nuisance complaints, increases volunteer engagement, employee morale, and resources for animals in need, benefits public health by increasing cat vaccination rates. And these are legitimate reasons for the government to support a TNR program, and are consistent with its duties to protect the public's health and safety. This past August, the American Bar Association, one of the most well-known and respected professional organizations, passed a resolution recommending that cities and states adopt and support TNR. We also have a letter from the Maryland Attorney General's Office that, as others have noted, you know, the state sponsors these TNR programs, and as long as it doesn't violate local law and cats are not returned to a dangerous situation, there should be no issues with the state abandonment law. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Going to call the next six. Please come down. Grace Felner, Danielle Joe-Baze, Emily Hovermill, Gordon Thomas, Kip Imperato, and Heather Mayhan, or Mayor, Heather Mayor, I think. And again, folks, thank you for your patience. And thank you for coming out. Ms. Felner?
Hi, I'm Grace Felner, the community cat program manager at the Baltimore Animal Rescue and Care Shelter in Baltimore, Maryland. I'm here as a representative from Baltimore City in favor of this bill. Similar regulations in Baltimore City beginning in 2007 attracted a $1 million grant from Best Friends Animal Society to fund a three-year, city-wide trap-neuter return or TNR program. By the end of the program's third year, we experienced over a 70% reduction in feline euthanasia, as well as a 9.6% reduction in adult cat intake, and a 54% reduction of kittens entering the shelter. Since 2013, we have spayed and neutered over 13,000 cats, and continue to spay and neuter about 3,000 per year, thanks to, excuse me, continued funding from the Maryland Department of Agriculture and Petco Foundation. TNR in Baltimore City has served more than 1,500 recorded cat colonies and thousands of city residents, and continues to receive 20 to 30 calls, texts, and emails per day. The popularity of TNR is always increasing as residents see the positive impact on their neighborhoods. A recent review of Baltimore's pro-TNR regulations at City Hall gathered an incredible turnout of community support, as well as testimony in our favor by Baltimore City Animal Control. And the hearing resulted in unanimous support from our council members. The issue of cat overpopulation is huge and cannot be solved by Animal Control alone, and community involvement is key to solving this issue. In addition to being a more humane option than trap and kill, trap-neuter return has proven to be more effective at controlling the population and is more popular among taxpayers. Baltimore has seen great success through the partnership between Barks, Animal Control, and city residents. This proposed bill would encourage and empower your residents to spay, neuter, and vaccinate the cats that they are already caring for in their neighborhoods, and I encourage you to please contact me if you have any questions about the success of TNR in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Felner. Danielle, is it Joe-Baze?
Danielle Baze, yes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Baze, and I'm the community cat program manager for the Humane Society of the United States, the largest animal protection organization in the country. Prior to this, I ran the community cat program in the District of Columbia, where I reside. On behalf of the HSUS and our members in Anarundel County, I'm here today to support Bill Number 9617 regarding community cats. The HSUS promotes strategic, non-lethal management of community cats, including trap-neuter return, as outlined in our publication, Managing Community Cats: A Guide for Municipal Leaders, which I have a copy for all of you today. The HSUS mission encompasses more than just companion animals. We fight for all animals, from domestic cats to African lions to the birds in our backyard. We operate the highest-volume wildlife rescue and rehabilitation hospital in the country. So in addition to seeing the struggle animal shelters face in addressing the number of homeless cats in our community, we know firsthand the impact free-roaming cats can have on the animals they catch. Like most people, we care about cats and wildlife, and ultimately, we'd like to see no unowned cats living outdoors. no unowned cats living outdoors, and this is something we can all agree on. But in order to reach this goal, we need a proactive solution like T-N-R to manage the population of cats that already are living in the landscape. Without an effective intervention or by retaining the status quo, these cats will continue to breed, which provides no protection for the cats or the wildlife. T-N-R does work to provide long-term solution, and I'm also sharing with you a copy of a recently published paper documenting how, in Newburyport, Massachusetts, they used T-N-R to humanely eliminate the community's 300-plus free-roaming cats. And that's just one example. I've also seen it work on my own block, although that's not in a published paper. Working alongside humane organizations and allowing residents to openly manage community cat colonies promotes the adoption of sanitary feeding practices, reduces nuisance complaints, facilitates the identification and intervention of new cats to the colony who may be lost or abandoned, so that they could be reunited or rehomed, enables collaboration with authorities when the problem arise.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baze. Appreciate it very much. And again, appreciate your patience. Ms. Hovermill?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. My name is Emily Hovermill. I'm also with the Humane Society of the United States, and I've also recently been appointed to the Maryland Spay and Neuter Advisory Program Board that operates under the Department of Agriculture. The Maryland Spay and Neuter Grants Program is designed to reduce the number of unwanted cats and dogs euthanized in shelters across the state by providing competitive grants to local governments, animal welfare organizations, that run and promote, run, promote, and provide free spay-neuter services to pets of low-income mail lenders and to colonies of outdoor cats. While I'm not speaking on behalf of the advisory board, I think it's important to recognize that many of the issues being debated in Anarundel County around this bill have been argued at the state level during the extensive debate around whether the state's spay-neuter program should award grants for trap-neuter return programs. In a 2015 letter to the Department of Agriculture Secretary Barton Feller, sent to the Department of Natural Resources Secretary, in response to a letter urging the spay-and-neuter advisory grant program to refrain from awarding grants to feral cat groups seeking to perform trap-neuter return, Secretary Barton Feller explained that after extensive research and policy development, the department determined that, quote, "For the program to reach its legislated goal to reduce shelter intake and euthanasia, projects seeking to reduce feral cat numbers by implementing responsible trap-neuter return must be included." And in the recent July 2017 report from the Maryland Spay and Neuter Program, released as a three-year analysis of the first three years of the spay-neuter program, they found that from the first three years of the program, there'd been a reduction of 39% in euthanasia of animals in the shelter and 3% reduction in intake. Of dogs, there was a 25% reduction in euthanasia. For cats, it was 43% in simply three years from this program. As Secretary Barton Feller predicted in his letter, it's clear that the state program would not have resulted in this traumatic reduction in euthanasia without funding trap-neuter return programs. There are options to grow and fund community-based trap-neuter return programs in Anarundel County based on model effectiveness. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gordon Thomas?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Gordon G. Thomas. Address 927 Old Annapolis Lake Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm here to support this bill, 96-17. Without the help of Marion and Suzanne coming to rescue not just my cats, but me, they had them neutered, spayed, shots clipped the tips of the ears. The kittens were adopted. This is one of the kittens. They named it Gordy. I guess after me. It was God-sent, Marion and Suzanne. And I bought this paper dated December 13. Chum-chum. Thank you.
You love her chum-chum.
The cats, they will return to me. They are healthy. I feed them. They love the wet food over the dry food. I guess I spoiled them. I support this bill 110%. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for moving. Mr. Kip Imperato?
Hey, it's doctor, man. I didn't get to print out my testimony, but let's wind it up over here. Dr. Kip Imperato, currently residing at 20 Redmont Road, Glenburnie, Maryland, 21060. I moved to this county immediately after graduating veterinary school in 2012, and in that time, I've worked with clinics and organizations that have spayed and neutered more than 50,000 animals. 80% of these animals have been a population known as community cats, which by convention extrapolates that approximately 40,000 cats have been vaccinated for rabies. But I'm not here today to speak about statistics and epidemiology, because I've only got two minutes to change the world today, and the best way I can do that is to explain what I do, why I do, every day, because I've taken an oath to protect the health and welfare of all animals. And I can say without question that high-volume spay-neuter programs have allowed me to make the biggest impact on animal welfare, whether through removing the stress of unwanted breeding, birthing, improved vaccination, and infectious disease testing, or wound treatments that I would otherwise have never been able to examine or treat for. And most importantly, it has also given me the ability to determine with informed evidence which cats are too sick for reasonable treatment measures and need to be euthanized, a population that accounts for 1/10th of 1% of all cats that have come through these programs. This bill isn't about bias. It isn't about crazy cat people. This bill is about progress, as all legislation should be. I was taught this philosophy in school, and I have dedicated my life to fulfilling that education to the absolute best of my ability, and I firmly believe every veterinarian that has graduated after me would feel the same. It makes no sense to me that prior to these aggressive programs, every animal I have helped over these five years would have been euthanized. If the pile of 40,000 dead cats is hard to bear, please think of the veterinarian responsible for creating that pile in vain, as euthanasia programs have never been proven to be any more effective at controlling population or disease than spay-neuter programs. Why kill 40,000 when we only need to euthanize 40? For these reasons, I encourage you to pass this bill and bring our county in line with Maryland State Initiative to reduce our community cat problem through an aggressive spay-neuter and vaccinate program. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gresso?
I'd like to just also acknowledge my neighbor right there, because, folks, we all got here tonight because Bob said something to Kip, and Kip said, "My councilman's a couple doors down," and that's how it all started.
Knocked our door like seven times.
And I just wanted to say one other thing, because we want to move on tonight. That legislation went on Facebook, and we had close to 25,000 people. Look at that. I could put all kinds of good stuff, and I'm lucky to break 140. 25,000. And then on top of that, had personal hits of 175, 177 people. All of them were for this bill except for three people. So that's how we all know we're on the right road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Gresso. Heather Mayer?
Dr. Chum-chum.
Good evening. My name is Heather Marr, and I live at 880 Co. Choy in Annapolis. I speak tonight on behalf of many satisfied Anarundel County residents who have received solutions, mediation, and T-N-R services for their community cat problems. I'd like to summarize briefly what you've all heard tonight about the experiences of your constituents whose cat problems have been solved by T-N-R. One, they all consider themselves very fortunate, because demand for T-N-R services is very high, and the needed resources and volunteers are very scarce. Two, it took them all more time than it should have to find help with their problems, so the local cat population grew while they searched for a solution. Passing this bill would solve that problem. Three, after implementing T-N-R, the number of kitten litters, complaints, and adult cats in all these neighborhoods dropped dramatically. And finally, all these positive outcomes were achieved with low-cost efforts entirely by volunteers and nonprofits at the request of property owners and residents. Passing this bill would have a hugely positive impact on Anarundel's county community cat problem at no additional cost to taxpayers, as you've heard. It would encourage groups like Best Friends, the Humane Society, and Alley Cat Allies to provide grant money and expertise for T-N-R throughout the county. All of these groups have long supported T-N-R as a way of humanely managing the cat population, as has the National Animal Care and Control Association and the American Veterinary Medical Association. And finally, I'd just like to say a word about the controversy. T-N-R tends to generate strong feelings between so-called bird people and so-called cat people. While I am both a bird person and a cat person, and I would argue that this is a false distinction when it comes to this issue. Both groups want the same thing, a reduction of the outdoor, unowned, homeless cat population. I owned a T-N-R cat rescued from the streets of Baltimore who was put up for adoption, and I am also a member of the Cornell Ornithology Lab. I participate every year in the Great Backyard Bird Count. I support the humane reduction and management of community cat populations, and I urge the vote, the board, to vote for this bill.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and doctor. And gentlemen, excuse me, Mr. Gordon. Okay, I'm going to call the next six, please. Denise Haworth, Linda Curry, Inga Peters, Susan McDonough, and Linda Mazur. Just going to call those five. I think Ms. Paulson's already testified. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Hayworth, is it?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Denise Hayworth, and I reside at 632 Leprechaun Lane in Glenburnie. I am here to support Bill 9617. At one time, the population of feral cats in my community was growing. I was able to catch several litters of kittens and take them to animal control for them to handle a taxpayer expense. Many of the kittens were not caught and became part of the colony. There were a lot of cat fights, with males defending their territory and females caterwauling when they were in heat. Most of this occurred at night, disturbing the neighbors. In 2014, I met a couple from Prince George's County who were the caretakers of a cat community. They taught me how to T-N-R. With the help of the Spay, Spaw, and Neuter Nook, I was able to T-N-R 15 cats in my community. Unfortunately, there was a neighbor who thought some of my ear-tipped cats were just homeless cats. Those cats were trapped and taken to the county, and because ear tipping was not recognized and those cats were considered unadoptable due to their feral ways, they were put to sleep. Since T-N-Ring the cats in my neighborhood, there have been no additional kittens born in my area. This means that no kittens have ended up at animal control, and money has been saved. I continue to provide shelter, food, and water for the current community cats. Cat fights have almost been eliminated. I work closely with my neighbors to explain what I have done. They know they can contact me if they experience any issues with the cats. To date, there have been no issues. I have seen firsthand how T-N-R can improve the quality of life for community cats and the people that live in the neighborhood, the changes that Bill 9617 will make, will allow for these community cats to be protected. This is a humane way to manage community cats and work to reduce the feral cat population. Please vote for Bill 9617. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayworth. Linda Curry. She's no longer here. Ms. Peters, is it?
Yes. My name's Inga Peters. I'm at 205 Bay City Road in Stevensville. I run a, one of the small rescues nonprofits in Queen Anne County. I have been rescuing and T-N-R-ing for 10 years or more. Recently this year, organized as a nonprofit organization. And it's very frustrating to try to take care of the colonies and take care of the cats when you do not have the community's support, and I believe this bill will help with community supporting us as individuals that are out there. And I'd also like to speak some to the arguments that some of the community has about the birds and about the small animals that the cats kill. We set out wildlife cameras when we are watching our colonies. I do this to learn about the cats and also to learn how many I have in my colony, what's happening to them, whether they're sick, whether or not there are new kittens. I have on my wildlife camera at one of the feeding stations, we have several feeding stations that are next to each other. We have one cat, feral cat, that is eating, and believe it or not, in the next station, directly next to it, not more than two feet away, is a rat that is eating in the next feeding station. They were there for 15 minutes, eating together, looked at each other, and never once did the cat touch the rat. Also, I have video of cardinals sitting directly on top of the feeding station right in front of the cat, eating food along with the cat, and the cat never once touched it. I have several videos like this, and it speaks volumes to the argument that cats kill the birds. If they are cared for and they have enough food out there, they're not going to go chasing a bird to go and kill them. They may go after squirrels or smaller animals.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peters. Appreciate your testimony. Susan McDonough?
I'm a, Susan McDonough, I'm a spay-neuter veterinarian also. Thank you, Kip. I live at 712 Dividing Creek Road in Arnold. And about more than 20 years ago, there was a controversy about intravenous drug users and the fact that they were spreading HIV and hepatitis and some other diseases. And the controversy was about needle exchange. We should not do needle exchange because intravenous drug use is wrong. We all recognize that community cats are not the solution. Cats should be in the houses like dogs. We don't have a dog problem the way we have a cat problem. So I'd like to draw the analogy that the authorities gave up and have embraced the needle exchange program, and it has a huge impact on the public health. And this is, this trap-neuter return and vaccinate is our needle exchange program. Just need to address rabies just for a second. We have five rabies species in Anarundel County: bats, raccoons, foxes, skunks, and cats. And foxes, skunks, and cats are the number two, three, three, four, and five, but sometimes they're the number four, three, and two, or something like that. Cats are always in the top five. They're usually number four or number five. Raccoons and rabbits, of course. And every single cat that is T-N-R-ed is also vaccinated against rabies, and this is huge for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McDonough. I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm a little confused. You're in support?
Yes.
Okay.
100% in support. I just wanted to address the reality that these are not wild animals. There are people, there are animals that people, "Oh, my cat got pregnant. I guess I'll just let her go behind the 7-Eleven."
Okay.
This happens. It's going to happen and happen, and there's not a good solution to it. So I thought the analogy was appropriate.
Thank you. I just got a little lost in it. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mazur, Linda Mazur?
My name is Linda Mazur, and I reside at 752 Dividing Creek Road, Arnold. I'm here to speak in favor of Bill 9617. Many times when you talk about T-N-R programs, there are groups with competing interests. But there is one common goal that we all can support, and that is, we would all like to decrease the amount of community cat populations within our communities. When the focus is on the reduction of community cats, the most effective technique should be implemented. A well-managed community cat, trap-neuter release, vaccinate program is the most effective method available. One reason for this is that T-N-R is a humane solution that is generally supported by most citizens. Many citizens are reluctant to contact animal control if they fear the cats will just be trapped and euthanized. So your cat problem just grows bigger and bigger rather than reducing it. In addition to the humane aspect of a well-managed T-N-R program, this method is more cost-effective. Grant funds are available, and volunteers willingly participate in this method. A well-managed T-N-R program lowers the shelter cat intake, which reduces the cost to taxpayers. This shelter cat intake reduction also helps to ease the compassion fatigue that is commonly felt by animal control staff that participate in the euthanasia process. An effective T-N-R program increases public safety through the use of rabies vaccinations for the community cats. While every community is different, there is an opportunity to use collaborative approach with groups that have competing interests. Through thoughtful, respectful dialogue, many communities have already begun to arrive at solutions that protect all interests to the greatest extent possible. In closing, I'd like to point out that the cats are already here. Decades of trap and kill and feeding bans and other ineffective methods have not solved the issue of community cats. A non-targeted, selective response to community cat problems does not reduce the cat population. The choice tonight is to weather the impoliment targeted approach, that is.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate your testimony. Thank you. There are two more people, I think, that have signed up, Andrea Chris and Cheryl Thomas. And if there's anybody else that wants to testify, please come down at this time. We would have four more chairs. Madam Secretary will get you signed up if you haven't signed up yet. Andrea Chris?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
This is on.
Is this on?
You're on now. Go ahead.
Yep, my name is Andrea Chris. I live at 6307 Carolina Avenue in Glenberne. I am a resident of Anaronda County, North County, which has a tremendous problem with free-roaming cats and just Spaineuter in general. I've been doing this for 10 years. I have been an operative in Baltimore City for the greater part of that 10 years. Housing Authority of Baltimore City is my stomping grounds. So I deal with all kinds of people. I can tell you, the first trap-neuter-return program that came into being in Baltimore City helped me to help the people, one-on-one, deal with not only outdoor cats but indoor. I have ear tipped many a cat that was friendly, not a feral cat. It was the only way to do it. It was the cheapest way to do it. Now I find myself feeding some of those cats that were left behind by many people who dumped them. So there's a double problem here. I would like to see the language in this bill read "trap-neuter-return and management," not "TNR" on its own, because you have to have a managed colony. It is imperative, because I don't like the model of just throw the cats out with an ear tip because we want to reduce the numbers in our shelters. It can happen. I see it. This is a people problem. It's not only a cat problem. Irresponsible owners, and just generally, cats reproduce quickly. But this has also been a way to interact with the low-income demographic of my area and also Baltimore City, and really work with the people. We work with drug addicts on the streets. We work with hoarders. We work with the homeless.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Ms. Thomas, Cheryl Thomas?
Yes. My name is Cheryl Thomas. I'm at 488 Peach Leaf Court in Odenton. First, I would like to just take a quick moment to say, can everybody who is in support of the bill please stand up just to show just how many people are here in support of this?
Thank you. Thank you very much, folks.
All right. And to get started, as a person dedicated to TNR and in the welfare of animals in our community, I fully support the passage of Bill 9617. This bill not only protects cats, but also protects my personal investment of time, money, and resources. Those people who have taken it upon themselves to help the cats in their community, even though they don't own them, and the taxpayers and employees of Anaronda County. I want to give you a personal perspective. First, I've been doing TNR since about 2010. First, I started in Baltimore City because they had the most mature program. But then I started working within my own backyard. In 2012, I noticed a large number of cats and kittens in my neighborhood, and I was concerned. I found the person who was feeding them but not fixing them, and I offered to help. I could fix and vaccinate the adults and help get the kittens to rescues for adoption. This would immediately reduce the number of cats and kittens in that area and prevent more from coming along. The woman was really excited, and as an offer of good faith, she handed me five three-week-old, really sick kittens. Thank you so much. I kept one of them and got the other four adopted out, so I'm not hoarding them all. And I offered to come back in a couple of days after I could get a plan together to help get the cats fixed, find places to get them spayed and neutered. I didn't know about places like Space Bar at this point, but I was looking for a plan. As a long story short, somebody told her that she could not feed. She picked up the cats from Animal Control.
You're in support of the bill?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thomas.
How'd they go buy this?
And all those people that stood up for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was just trying to help you get to the period there. Thank you. Sir?
Yes, my name is Gerald Weingrad. I live at 1328 Washington Drive in Annapolis, Maryland. I am sorry to be the skunk at the garden party, but this bill would be a cat catastrophe for wildlife, for public health, and for the cats themselves. It is nothing short of cat-otonic for the real problems of dealing with the overpopulation of free-roaming cats. I grew up right here in Annapolis. My first home was 1946 on top of my father's tavern, a block and a half up West Street. And I had cats ever since I was four years old, as early as I can remember. My first cat was Tom, a tomcat, that we allowed unknowingly to roam free. He lived to at least 14 years of age, through two successive moves, and returned to his own neighborhood here. I had my last cat when my mother died, and her 17-year-old tabby was going to be put down by my siblings because of its age and needing dental work, and I kept the cat alive until she died. So I'm not against cats. All cats should be indoors. When I left the Maryland Legislature, where I served for 16 years representing this area, north and south and west of Annapolis, I dedicated my life to bird conservation because I've always been a wildlife enthusiast and worked for the American Bird Conservancy and helped start the Cats Indoors Program. Actually, HSUS worked with us and supported this Cats Indoors Program. It was against trap-neuter-release at that time, and I have articles from them. PETA, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, I have a letter. It should have been sent to you all who vigorously oppose trap-neuter-release. Agree with me, they kill an unbelievable number of birds, and wildlife peer-reviewed studies show that the estimate is in books and in journals that are peer-reviewed, 1.4 billion birds a year to as many as 3.7, and up to 20 billion small mammals and animals are killed too. And I appreciate, since I'm the only opposition, a little deference if I could, Mr. Chairman.
I can't do that for you, sir, but stay there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. Before you move on, I mean, it is customary to acknowledge that Senator Weingrad is a former elected official, and I would say I do appreciate your fortitude following 24 speakers in support as the lone opposition, so.
It's happened to me in the legislature before, like the phosphate, the phosphate ban in detergents was vigorously opposed, and it's now a law and saved money.
Did you have another thought, sir?
May I finish?
Please do.
I just have a few more. Thank you. First, trap-neuter-vaccinate-release programs do not reduce feral cat populations. You've heard anecdotal evidence here, but if you look at peer-reviewed documented studies, one of the most recent was 2014, and you all were sent this. I didn't send you a copy. I have a copy of it. You were sent it by email. The prime people that authored this were with the Center for Disease Control down in Atlanta, Georgia. And the chief author was a veterinarian and a master of public health holder. They looked at trap-neuter-release around this country and the world and concluded that it was ineffective in reducing cat populations. And not only that.
Thank you.
It was ineffective in reducing rabies and exposure to other diseases.
Thank you, sir. I thank you for your further explanation. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for, thank you all for your patience. Ma'am, I don't have your name, but go ahead.
Hi, my name is Candace Fatsell, and I came here for a completely different reason tonight and happened to blunder into something that I actually have some firsthand knowledge with, and I apologize for the flash from my shirt. I live in southern Anaronda County, but for some time I lived in Baltimore City and happened to fall into association with one of the local rescues there. And that was where I learned about trap-neuter-release and management, as was just briefly mentioned, where cat colonies are taken over by a caretaker and that the animals are trapped and released after being fixed, so they can no longer reproduce. The issue was, and what I discovered there was, if you take animals out of an area where feral cats are already populated, even if you take all of the animals that you can catch, you don't catch them all. And they reproduce very quickly, especially once the colony's gone away. So if you take animals out of a colony that's already established, you're not going to get them all, and they are going to repopulate and usually will repopulate greater. And if they aren't managed, so that the cats aren't being fed, they will actually scavenge them for food. So they get into the trash, they get in, you know, they kill animals, they kill, so that's where they become nuisances.
I see.
If the cat population is managed so that they have a population that's being cared for, well-fed, where animals, new animals coming into the colony are noticed by the colony management and then taken, also trapped and released after being neutered and vaccinated, then what happens is, is that colony maintains its territory, so then new cats are less likely to come in, and because those animals are all fixed, none of them reproduce. So over time, besides the fact that the young animals are taken out and adopted, socialized, over time, that colony decreases.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your explanation. Sir, I don't have your name.
Christopher Jimenez, Annapolis, Maryland. Thank you for, I guess I'm the last one to go. I'm the shelter manager at the SBCA here in Annapolis, and I can tell you that if we pass this bill, it will take fear away from a lot of the people, especially with mental health issues, hoarders, that don't want to step forward and get help to put, you know, these cat populations, you know, under control. Our intake department daily receives dozens to hundreds, you know, dozens of calls. We receive thousands of calls a year about cats, and it's amazing to see what some of the people that are here in the audience that we've worked with, what we've been able to do to manage the population. You know, cats, excuse me, you know, kittens get to a certain age when, you know, they're still able to be domesticated. You know, we have fosters and whatnot that we're able to domesticate the cats, and then we're able to place them in homes. And then we get, and then there's some cats that just will not shelter well, and they don't belong in shelters. It's not fair to them. They haven't never lived, you know, and, you know, confined, and they're dangerous to the staff because, so if we were to pass this bill, it would make it safer for the Animal Control staff and my staff as well, for my caretakers. Dealing with feral animals is not easy. They don't belong in shelters. Trap-neuter-release is the way to go, and you, this county council has the option, and you guys, to get this solved. And if this bill weren't passed, the cat population shoots up, you guys would be at fault for it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for your testimony. I'm going to close the public hearing on Bill 9617.
Are there any questions, though, of us? No?
I'm sorry. No, we don't. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't answer questions. I'm sorry.
No, not answering. May I ask?
Do you have any questions?
Does the panel have any questions?
No, chairman. We're fine.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 9617.
Bill number 9617 and ordinance concerning public safety, animal control, community cats.
Any further questions? There are amendments, I understand. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes proposed changes to the definition of public nuisance in Article 12 and returns the definition to its original state.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we have the administration explain their intent?
I was getting, I was just, no, I was just going to. Ms. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amendment Number One keeps the definition of public nuisance unchanged because a community cat should not be held to a lower standard than other animals.
All right. Yes, Mr. Grasso?
I just want to tag on to my colleagues over here supporting this piece of legislation. This amendment has my blessing. I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Anybody else?
Don't you feel better? Don't you feel much better when you got the chum-chum seal?
Just catching up with it here. All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith?
All right, I guess with the approval of chum-chum, yes, aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
And Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment modifies the definition of feral cat to match the definition found in the COMAR 10622.
Ms. Schultz?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me.
Move to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso?
Once again, this has got my approval again. I'm okay with it.
Ms. Schultz?
Thank you. Amendment Number Two does exactly what Madam Secretary says. Instead of having a separate definition than COMAR, the administration believes the county should comply with the COMAR definition of feral cat.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
I'm going to call the roll, sir.
Then why don't you do that?
Okay.
Good idea.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you please read Amendment Number Three?
Amendment Number Three. This amendment makes it mandatory to identify an ear-tipped community cat as sterilized and vaccinated for rabies at least once.
Mr. Grasso?
Motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Once again, I'm okay with this. I don't have a problem with it.
Ms. Schultz?
Thank you. With Amendment Number Three, we want to be clear that ear tipping will be used to identify a community cat and clarifies that an ear-tipped cat signifies that the cat has received at least one rabies vaccination in its lifetime.
Thank you. Any further, any further discussion, questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please call the, excuse me, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four. This amendment modifies the proposed definition of community cat caregiver to include groups, require that care include food, shelter, and medical care, and clarify that a caregiver is not an owner, and removes references to animal welfare groups throughout the bill.
Motion to adopt.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I'll second.
Any discussion, Mr. Grasso?
I'm okay with this one, too.
Ms. Schultz?
Does exactly what Madam Secretary says. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Four is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Bill Number 9617, as amended, will be heard on January 2, 2018. And again, thank you, folks. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 4817.
Resolution Number 4817. Resolution proposing an amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to add a provision to the procedures for passing ordinances to require notice by posting on a subject property of a change of zoning by amendment to a comprehensive zoning.
Folks, we, I have, excuse me, Madam Secretary, I have to ask you to please exit quietly. Thank you. We still have business going on. Thank you so much.
Property of a change of zoning by amendment to a comprehensive zoning ordinance not requested by application to or proposed by the Office of Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is my resolution. We had a fairly robust discussion at a previous council meeting. Between that time and now, we, I have at least discussed a couple of different concepts for amendments. Uh, I, I believe our current status is that we're not going to submit any amendments. But I, I just, I don't want to rehash this resolution. I just want to go through a couple fine points. Number one, I've, I've heard, you know, some concern or questions about limiting the, the power of the council in comprehensive rezoning. And I want to be clear that this does not limit the council or preclude the council from introducing any amendments. It just says you have to tell people about it. And it's a pretty modest posting requirement. I believe the language is at least five days and, or that, I'm sorry, that was your amendment, Mr. Walker. But anyway, the, the details of the actual posting are not going to be in the charter, because I don't want to be too prescriptive, but they will be in the subsequent legislation that the future council will need to adopt. The amendment doesn't speak to whether the onus is on the applicant or the owner in particular, and I don't think is an undue burden for either the council or the applicant. And remember, any amendment that is submitted by members of the council has to be vetted in some way, just to be drawn up by the Office of Planning and Zoning. So that takes a couple days anyway, so I really, I'm very sympathetic to the concern about limiting the council's powers. And again, I don't think that this will limit the council's ability to do anything. It just adds a layer of public notice and transparency. And if we're doing this amendment now, it's six months out from what I understand the quote-unquote deadline to be for charter amendments, so I'd, I'd like us very much to pass this cleanly today. If between now and the deadline, there are some additional fine details raised, I'm open to revisiting it, but I would like this council to make a commitment to do this modest improvement to comprehensive zoning. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Any, any other thoughts, discussion? So there, there are not amendments, then?
None, none that I'm anticipating, but it's a free country.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please welcome.
I had worked on two, but I've decided not to, not to submit them.
And I'll say for the record again, I was sympathetic to Mr. Walker's concerns. I think there was some complexity about doing what he wanted on, on this particular resolution, but I will continue conversation with him to adjust those concerns in the future.
Ms. Schultz?
Uh, the administration supports transparency in the comprehensive rezoning process, so we're on board.
The Office of Planning and Zoning has no opposition to this bill.
That's an old Larry Tom phrase. No opposition. I like it.
All right.
You could almo— you could almost read that as support if you were so inclined, but—
I, I would be happy to speak in support of transparency.
At this point in the mirroring, meeting, Mr. Hager, I hear what I want to hear, so—
I'm sorry, Mr. Hager, your time is up. Just kidding. Um, all right, then, any further discussion, Mr.? Okay. Madam Secretary, then, please call the roll on Resolution Number 48. Do you have to read it first?
No, I've already read it in for about—
Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 4817, as amended.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
It barely came out. Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
And Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 4817 is adopted.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?